All right, welcome everyone. This is a special meeting tonight for the Oversight Committee. I appreciate everybody attending tonight. As the council, we have certain procedures that we do go through. So I've seen some of you at council meetings. The first thing that we do is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I can't hear.
You gotta get closer. Now can you hear?
Yeah.
All right. The first thing that we do to begin every meeting is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we would please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will get right into the discussion. We will start the evening with communication from elected officials and then we will have an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. I believe there were sign-in sheets before everybody walked in. If you have not signed that and you want to speak, you may go out now. And I will give directions as we get to that point. But first of all, communication from elected officials, I believe. Who's kicking the presentation off?
Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay. Wow, if my government, high school government teacher could see me now, I guarantee he would never have believed this. Thank you President Thompson, members of the council, members of the community for being here for this most important discussion. Before I get started, I just noticed as I was walking in, South has this Hall of Distinction as you come in. And sitting right here next to me are two of the newest members, Senator Gray Good and Mayor Brandon Sacaban. Congratulations. Also looking forward to both your comments later tonight. I graduated Terrell South in 1984. And like me, this building is showing us age. A little gray around the edges and the internal mechanical systems aren't working the best anymore. Sorry, I had to lighten the mood there a little bit, hopefully. Tonight, the commissioners are here to discuss an important next step for our community, a proposal to establish an oversight board that will guide how Vigo County moves forward with school facility planning. This is about transparency, accountability, and building a foundation for the future of Vigo County's students, the community, and our economy. Some people have asked, why are we tackling this issue? I would direct you to the bottom three comments. Quality of life for families, workforce readiness, community economic and economic growth and safety. Vigo County stands at an important crossroads. Our schools have served generations of students, families, and employers, but today their condition reflects the need for reinvestment. What's at stake isn't just bricks and mortar, it's the future of our community, our workforce, and our local economy. Others will say, why now? Our schools have served this community for generations. They're where our workforce begins and where our neighborhoods grow, but today they're showing their age and failing to meet the needs of the students. What's at stake isn't just infrastructure, it's the kind of the future Vigo County offers to families, employers, and students. And I want to read that again because I think that's incredibly important. It's not about the infrastructure, it's about the future of our county and our kids. We've heard the community's call for change. People want improvement, but they also want it done the right way, with fiscal responsibility and full transparency. The commissioners share that belief. That's why we are bringing forward a plan designed not to add red tape, but to restore Transparency. You hear that a lot these days, and that's at the center of not only this legislation, but of this board that we are asking to create. The commissioners believe any plan for school facilities must begin with accountability. We know trust has to be earned and not expected. The Oversight Board proposal is designed to do exactly that. It establishes a clear, public process for reviewing funding options, vetting financial feasibility, and ensuring expert analysis guides every decision. There are no salaries for these board members, no hidden agendas, just a structured system of checks and balances created under House Bill 1515. This is how we ensure both transparency and progress. We want this board to look like our community. We want all walks of life on this board. Farmers, businesspeople, we want it to look like our community. This board is intentionally designed to be balanced and inclusive. Appointments come from multiple entities, the county commissioners, county council, mayor, business community, and school board, to guarantee shared representation. It is temporary and purpose-driven, created only to evaluate and oversee this one major project. This isn't bureaucracy, it's a process built to protect taxpayers while keeping our community's needs front and center. Mr. Schweitzer, I believe you're next.
We've had several conversations with people over the last several months about what this Oversight Board would be doing and the purpose-driven education it will provide to the community. This board is a five-member board representing local government, education, and business, temporary specialized committee, not another permanent layer, and focused on responsible solutions. Which I believe you just went over that, didn't you Mark? Because I can't find where I'm at my slide here. Oh gosh, excuse me for just a minute, I have lost my spot. The Oversight Board will not act on assumptions or guesswork. Its members will have the authority to hire professional experts when necessary, particularly financial advisors and legal counsel, to ensure every recommendation is grounded in fact and compliance. Indiana municipal finance laws are intricate, especially when they intersect with educational funding, public-private partnerships, and casino or grant allocations. Having access to qualified experts ensures that the board's analysis and recommendations are legally sound, fiscally responsible, and fully transparent. This is exactly what the $100,000 allocation supports, not compensation for board members, but the cost of doing this process right and protecting taxpayers at every stage. What the Oversight Board will do is will hire an independent financial advisor to assess the Vigo County's fiscal capacity and bonding limits, evaluate school, corporation finances, and partnership potential identity, or potential, identify non-tax funding options, grant foundations, private partnerships. We will also analyze how Terracocina Foundation funding fits into long-term financial planning. With legal counsel present at each meeting to ensure compliance with open-door law and state finance laws, review proposed financial instruments for legality and accountability, and will discuss municipal partnerships and education funding laws that are complex. Expert guidance ensures every decision is lawful, transparent, and accountable. What will the Oversight Board look like? The composition, as previously stated, is five members representing local government, education, business, and community interests. They must meet a conflict of interest and transparency standards under Indiana code, supported by contracted financial and legal experts and not a full-time staff. The operations will meet on a regular basis for a limited amount of time. All meetings to the public are recorded for transparency. And we'll finally produce a report outlining viable funding paths and clear recommendations to the commissioners and to the county council. What the Oversight Board can and cannot do, created under Senate Bill 382, which Senator Good carried for us and is now House Bill 1515, the powers are clearly defined in the law. I gotta reiterate to all of you, I've been a council member for two years, I've been a commissioner for four years. When the Vigo County Council is asked, these guys know it better than anybody, for an appropriation, if that appropriation is $5, the council appropriates $5. If a committee then goes beyond that $5 to $10, the committee has to come up with the additional $5, or they would have to go back to the council and ask for an additional appropriation. Anything that's outside of our budget is an additional appropriation.
So it hasn't been voted on once though?
Thank you, I know that.
So I will hear again for vote?
Well, you'll see here in just a minute. This is not an open checkbook of new taxing entity. It's charged to review funding sources and make a formal recommendation back to the council and cannot obligate funds or commit the county to any expenditure without council approval. The Oversight Board has no decision-making authority.
Mr. Good?
You're up. Well, good evening, everyone. You'll have to forgive me, I may need to take a drink of water. It's harvest season and my seasonal allergies impact me. I'm a history guy and I always love to invoke a little inspiration. I think it's very fitting because when we first started working on this bill, I had a constituent say, Senator Good, it's gonna, it was easier to put a man on the moon than trying to address these school facilities. So I'll say a quote from September 12, 1962, from President Kennedy at Rice University who said, "We choose to put a man on the moon, not because it's easy, but because it's hard." There are some who want to run away from challenges, President Thompson, and then there are those who run to the challenges. It would have been much easier for a state senator, or a county commissioner, or a mayor, or the president of a county council to say, yeah, we know, we've got issues with our school facilities. Go to your school corporation, tell them to figure it out. But instead, we had a group of leaders, regardless of political party, with the interests of this community first and foremost in mind, that said, let's take this on and let's do it together. And I cannot express enough my appreciation to our mayor and our county commissioners and our county council, including those who vigorously disagree with what we're trying to do because they're asking the tough questions that we must answer to ensure the confidence of the people. You know, there's very little agreement that takes place at the Indiana State House when looking at policy impacting local governments, our school policy. And yet, we struck gold, my friends, in that Indiana State Senate with this legislation, with this pilot program, to the tune of 49 to nothing in your Indiana State Senate. We had Republicans and Democrats working together that said, we believe in Vigo County. We understand that the county has great teachers, the county has great students and families. We need to do something with the facilities. That's happening all over the state of Indiana. And yet, we also understand that people don't want their property taxes increased, and the people have spoken. However, Senator Good, work with your team and let's think through what could be some other options, emphasis on the word option, that could address our school facilities without increasing property taxes, using tax revenue that has already been collected, tax revenue that is fiercely protected by these fine individuals who are here today and those fine individuals who are not here today. They are the guardians of your tax dollars and ultimately have the final say. So we introduced legislation that answered this question, what if? What if a county government had the financial wherewithal and the desire to enter into a cooperative agreement with our city leaders, with our county commissioners, with our school corporation, to potentially invest dollars that have already been collected to help be a part of the solution for our school facilities? What if that were possible? I don't think any of us would have expected the county government to say, here's a check, Dr. Himsel, we love you, school corporation, we love you, here's a check, go off and do your thing. No, we wanted to make certain that there could be some sort of vetting mechanism in the spirit of accountability, to ask the very great questions that council member Ellis has been asking. And then to do so in a transparent, in a transparent way. What do I mean by that? A board that would be subject to the open door law, to have to post in advance to our local media when that group was going to be meeting, for every document to be subject to the Freedom of Information laws for you. So if our friend Sue Loughlin wants to do some digging in response to a rumor that might be going around the community, that that board would be subject to the same types of transparency laws that our governments are subject to. We know what people are thinking about our school facilities. I almost want to have everybody stand up again and then sit back down and hear those squeaky chairs. But we also know this, we can't just keep raising property taxes to address it. I think all of us have heard that loud and clear. You heard, I don't know, several weeks ago, a presentation by our school corporation to the county council. And I guess what I would want to say is this, they presented a plan, not the plan. That's the responsibility, should the county council determine, that would be the responsibility of this Oversight Board to help vet that plan, as well as other potential proposals and possible solutions. Maybe that is it, maybe not. But we need some folks to start really doing some drilling down and asking those tough questions and running these different scenarios and then ultimately make a recommendation, a recommendation, not approving one thing or another, but making a recommendation to our county council. And I'll end at this, I'm a small government guy philosophically. I think the more decisions that can be made at our local level, the better. And that really was the genesis of this legislation. Because I have tremendous respect for each of the council members who are here today. I have tremendous respect for Mr. Ellis and Ms. Wager and Ms. Alsop and Mr. Gentry. I hope that they have the opportunity to hear my words. I want to continue to work with all of you because I respect you and I want you ultimately to have the decision-making authority. Every, every request to the penny that that board would be seeking, whether it's $1, $100,000, whatever it may be, will always, always, always rest with our elected officials at the county council. Just like if the community corrections comes before the county council, you have the final say. Just like if my friend, Mr. Loudermilk, on behalf of his advocacy for those group homes, he's got to go before the county council, first the sunshine meeting and then the actual decision-making. It's the very same thing. And we did it because we have respect for all of you and we have tremendous aspirations for Vigo County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, great job, as always. Mike, would you like to introduce our next speaker?
Okay, audience and council members, at this time, I'd like to introduce Earl Elliott to present some facts on the financial capacity of Vigo County. This data is public information available on the Gateway Indiana site. Mr. Elliott is a certified public accountant and local business owner at Sack Rider &amp; Company since 1981. He served as city councilman. During his tenure, he helped navigate Terre Haute through some very trying financial times. Mr. Elliott.
Good evening, Council President Thompson, members of the county council, commissioners, distinguished speakers, and most importantly, the Vigo County taxpayers who are in attendance. I would like to say to high behold to the thousands of citizens who are watching this now, or will watch this later on YouTube. On the city council, I dealt with the State Board of Accounts and their audits of the city, and contacted representatives of the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance when necessary, and I have a reasonable level of knowledge of local government finance. One thing I did learn as a member of the city council is that when the Indiana legislature and your local state senator spend the time and energy to pass a bill to help our community, we should respond and attempt to use it. If we don't address it, it is less likely we will receive their assistance in the future. We are here to learn about this new, how this new legislation could help us find revenue sources in the form of a public and private partnership to reduce the amount of property tax increase to pay for our school building and renovation program. As mentioned, this calls for the formation of a public oversight committee and contains many specifics and details that must be followed. The county commissioners have suggested the Vigo County Council provide this committee funding for consultants using $100,000 of distributions received from the casino. This is a reasonably new form of revenue to the county of about $900,000 per year, consisting of $1,005,000 of the distributions received annually on a quarterly basis, reduced by about $600,000 of casino revenue, I'm sorry, riverboat casino revenue taxes that had been received in the past that now are no longer received, but a net gain of $900,000. I'm here to provide information on the county's cash position as of December 31, 2024, and to provide my opinion as to whether or not the county can afford this $100,000 for the effort of the Oversight Committee. We're ready to go. I obtained a copy of the, of the Vigo County's 2024 Cash and Investment Report from the State of Indiana's Gateway Financial Report System, which is public record and available to anybody. Now, you all, that report's not on the screen because it's really condensed, but this report contains the local fund number, the local fund name, the cash balance of the fund at January 1, 2024, the receipts credited to the fund in 2024, the disbursements charged to the fund in 2024, and the resulting end-of-year, December 31, 2024, cash balance for each of the county's 222 individual funds. 222 individual funds. This report contains grand totals at the end. The county, the council members and commissioners have a copy of this four-page report, and I use this report to prepare my excerpts and observations that you will see on the screen. I started with the, at the top, the total balances of the report. $145 million cash beginning of year, $343,000, or $343 million revenue, $328 million disbursements, resulting in an ending cash balance of $163.14. From that, I subtracted the American Recovery Program Fund, which is federal funds that basically are one-time deal and not really representative and won't, hopefully won't repeat in the future. I then struck a subtotal, and then from that, I subtracted what's called pass-through funds. Those are simply funds where money is temporarily credited to that account until the money is distributed to the state and local, or local government entities in the county or distributed to the appropriate county fund. The best example of this is the property taxes we pay to Vigo County. Those all don't go and stay in Vigo County, they get distributed to the, to the city, the townships, the volunteer fire departments, so on and so forth, and then some to the Vigo County, other Vigo County funds that are to receive that. That brought me to the adjusted totals at nearly at the bottom of that page, which indicates December 31, 2024, adjusted cash balance of $147.6 million, compared to 2024 disbursements of $139.2 million. That equates, that cash balance end of the year equates to about 12.72 months of disbursements, which is just a tremendously high number. The county's overall cash position is very strong. Page two, I go on to take a look at several, two of the major operating funds of the county. First one is the general fund, began the year at $31 million, ended the year at $34.5 million, with $50.1 million of disbursements. That end-of-year cash balance represents 8.27 months of disbursements, monthly disbursements. 8.27 months of cash is a tremendously high number for a governmental operating fund. I know Baker Tilly, accounting consultants to local governments, had reported to council, city council, that 2.0 months is a good number, you know, to strive for. Well, we're six months above that, six-plus months above that. The county treasurer, Josie Thompson, told me the other, earlier this week, that this county earned about $8 million of interest income from investing these funds on a short-term basis. She expects 2025 investment earnings to be about $7 million as interest rates. She expects 2025 investment earnings to be about $7 million as interest rates have declined a little bit in 2025. The next fund is the Edit Fund, which is Edit Dollars can be used for basically any purpose you want to use them for, began the year at $12 million, ended the year at $13 million, expenditures were $6.9 million. That represents 23.04 months of cash in the Edit Fund, which is an exceptional number. I also noted a Ready Day Fund on there of $976,000, nearly a million dollars that's just sitting there. And then I also talk about the Riverboat Wagering Tax Revenue Fund that I referred to a little earlier. So, the question is that I was asked to answer, can the county afford $100,000 to invest in our community, in our community's future, future of our schools and all of that means that's already been talked about, out of the funds received from the county, or from the casino? Absolutely it can. There's no question about it. And I don't understand comments that I saw from council members that indicated, well, maybe we can. I also saw or read some comments about, you know, well, the county needs to be able to pay its employees. Well, I understand that. Yeah, you kind of need to do that, but there's plenty of money there to do that. I mean, I'm just amazed that I saw that expressed on, on a YouTube video of a prior meeting or a newspaper quote from two different council members. So, in summary, the county can afford the $100,000, invest the $100,000, and I think at some point in time down the road, the conclusion will be reached that the county does have some excess funds that could be used for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Appreciate your time and commitment. Earl came and met with us earlier this week, and I don't know what you can say about Earl and what he's done for the city of Terre Haute, but he, single-handedly, I would say, as a CPA, represented the city extremely well and got the city out of a financial crisis in the past few years. So, Earl, thank you for your help and support in this project. It's my honor to introduce Kristen Craig, the CEO of the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce. She's been integral in this conversation, and now's her time to speak.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share information tonight. I want to thank all of you for being here, all of you as council members. Thank you. We greatly appreciate your willingness to listen, and also to this large audience full of people who are eager and willing to share their viewpoints with you tonight. This moment for public discourse in person between real people and not just those offering comments while hiding behind a keyboard is important and appreciated. You've all heard from me before on this subject, so I wanted to offer a little bit of a different perspective this evening. Let's start with a scenario where a family chooses to leave Terre Haute, Vigo County. What's, for the purposes of tonight's equation, let's talk about a family of four. So, this is two parents and two children. Let's assume the parents are 30 years old, and let's assume their children are of school age under the age of 18. A few more assumptions. The family moves away from Vigo County and does not return. The parents remain in the workforce until the age of 65 in another community. Let's also assume the children and their future spouses do not return to Terre Haute and work from their ages of 20 to 65. Now, for the purposes of tonight's equation, we're going to use Vigo County's average life expectancy and median household income for the multiplying factors. Based on all of this, we have done some work calculating the loss to our community when a young family leaves and never returns. If you look at their total economic impact over the course of their lives and their children's lives, it is easily $6 million in lost economic opportunity. That includes lost property taxes, lost food and beverage taxes, lost revenue for the schools, lost support for local businesses, lost childcare spending, lost donations to local nonprofits, and the list goes on and on and on. And to further illustrate this point, what does this equation mean when applied to a lost economic development opportunity? Let's say this family never came here as the employer they were going to work for chose to locate their new facility in a different community. There's several projects that I've been involved with that eventually hinged on the schools. An example from a few years ago was the F-35 Training Program that involved the 181st Intelligence Wing and the Terre Haute Regional Airport. This could have resulted in over 1,000 new jobs with an average salary of around $82,000 a year. Ultimately, Terre Haute was not chosen in large part because of the inadequacy of the school facilities and the concern about recruiting top-tier talent to move their families here. So, the math here is easy, but, but also frightening. Over 1,000 jobs, over 1,000 families, which based on the formula that I just described, easily totals a lost economic opportunity of over $10 billion for their entire lifetimes. These are huge numbers, and this is just one project, just one. But it also illustrates why this is not just a school problem. It is a problem that we all play a role in. The chamber has an obligation to create a business-friendly environment free of obstacles to growth and progress, and as the fiscal entity for the county, you have an obligation to ensure its fiscal health. Declining population and the subsequent loss of property taxes is a challenge that we must face together. Tough problems require tough solutions, and that's why I'm here today, asking for your help. The Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce, representing the voice of more than 600 local businesses, strongly supports the creation of an independent oversight board to help guide this critical first step of building a new high school in Vigo County School Consolidation Plan. The ask tonight, the ask next week, and the week after that is simple. Transfer funds to start the creation of an oversight board and let the process begin. I recognize that there are differing views about how to move forward, and that's exactly why an oversight board is needed. Vigo County needs a trusted, transparent structure that can examine all options, evaluate funding sources, bring facts to the forefront, and rebuild public confidence in the decision-making process. Let me focus on one word there, transparent. I have no hidden agenda. I have not been unduly influenced to advocate for this project. I am not secretly profiting, nor am I aware of anyone that is. What I am here saying tonight is that we have a problem that is inhibiting potential growth in our community, and the chamber is speaking up as an advocate for a solution. That is how communities improve. And here is the big thing, for a wide variety of reasons and under a wide variety of circumstances, we have an opportunity to solve this problem together in a way that makes sense for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Kelsey.
Good evening. Thank you, council, for having me here today. My name's Kelsey Hankwitz. I'm a local attorney here in town. I work for Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowry. Tonight, I am up here on behalf of the Terre Haute Casino Foundation. But before I read this statement, I also wanted to state that I am, I am an attorney. I'm also the wife of a Vigo County school teacher. I'm also the mom to a little one-year-old boy, soon to be two little boys here in a little bit. So, all the decisions here tonight affect my little kids, the ones that are here and the ones that are not, not quite on the earth quite yet. So, let me get into my statement. Thank you. A step pushed earlier this year, the Terre Haute Casino Resort Foundation Incorporated was created as a part of the local development agreement between the Vigo County Commissioners and the Terre Haute Casino Resort Operator Churchill Downs, Inc. It is a 501(c)(3) organization operating as a standalone foundation with an independent governing board. The board is composed of eight individuals who are appointed by the Vigo County Commissioners, Terre Haute Mayor, Churchill Downs Incorporated, and the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce. Our specific purpose is to prioritize funding of projects that align with the community's goals and pillars, such as the CU and Terre Haute Community Plan and the West Central Indiana Regional Plan. With that in mind, we recognize that strong schools are the cornerstone of economic development and workforce readiness. We also recognize that the strength of our local schools has consistently been identified as one of the key factors hindering our ability to attract and retain top-tier talent and jobs. Although the Vigo County School Corporation has great students, teachers, and staff, the condition of its facilities is severely outdated and no longer supports the level of education our community deserves. During the first year of casino operations, the Casino Foundation received 4.2 million in funding. The Casino Foundation is actively exploring ways in which a majority of our future annual funding can, could be utilized toward a collaborative community project for a new high school, a commitment that could span 20 to 25 years. This collaboration would include the proposed oversight board, Vigo County School Corporation, Vigo County Council, and other community stakeholders. We look forward to working together in the coming months to find ways that this public-private partnership model can benefit the entire Terre Haute and Vigo County communities. Thank you so much.
Okay, so before Dr. Chris Hemzil comes up here to speak, this is the call to action on November 4th. The Vigo County Commissioners are moving forward with the creation of an oversight board. You've heard from Earl tonight, you know the finances are readily available, and to spend $100,000 to better the future of our students, our teachers, and our children, to me and this group of county commissioners, Mayor Sacbun, Senator Good, is a no-brainer. We should certainly do this. So, next Tuesday, we'll be asking for the two, or the $100,000, and the following Wednesday, correct, Devin? It's a Wednesday meeting because of veterans, or 12th, sorry, 12th. That, that following Wednesday, the council will be voting on this. Remind everybody that this isn't about politics. It's simply not about politics. It's about teachers and children, and it's a process and a partnership with the council to explore opportunities within the walls of Vigo County to get a school project off the ground. By approving this oversight board and $100,000 of funding, the county council will ensure the community has a transparent, credible plan to address our school facilities finally once and for all. And this is an investment in accountability and the next generation of our Vigo County students. Dr. Hemzil, wherever you are.
First of all, thank you to all of you for showing up and being engaged and, and learning more about the process and what we've been talking about. Thank you, President, Council President Thompson, and the other members of our county council members for allowing me to speak tonight. Like Senator Good, I like to pull on things from the past, and so I'm going to start with a reminder that all of this started in 2008 when former Senator Luke Kenley authored a bill that would dramatically change the way school districts are funded in the state of Indiana. The Indiana General Assembly passed the bill and former Governor Daniels signed it into law, and a part of that new statute was voted on by our citizens to put into the Indiana Constitution. The result of all these actions capped our local property tax levies at a percentage of our property's assessed value, and these actions also dramatically changed the way schools are funded. It took away property taxes from being a part of the people portion of schools, and the state took on that responsibility, leaving transportation, our facilities, construction, equipment, technology for the property taxes, and everything else shifted to the state. When he was presenting the bill for consideration, former Senator Kenley communicated a hope that if the bill was enacted into law, it would eventually be a catalyst for units of local government and school districts to establish property tax rates and use the property tax levies in partnership with one another. If we fast forward to today, we are blessed to have an opportunity to be one of the first state counties in the state to do exactly what Senator Kenley envisioned back in 2008. We are grateful, grateful for the efforts and the leadership from Senator Good, from the support and the help of Representatives Heaton, Pfaff, and Yocum, and for many others from this community who advocated for the bill's passage that Senator Good sponsored, such as those who traveled to the State House to testify or support those testified in, or supporting those who testified in favor of the bill, including our three county commissioners, Mr. Klinkenbird, Mr. Morris, and Mr. Schweitzer, our Mayor Sacbun, Councilman Gentry, members of the Chamber of Commerce, members of our school board, and others. We also appreciate and support, the support of many others throughout Vigo County who emailed, called, wrote letters, attended Cracker Barrels, visited the State House, and engaged in other ways to encourage the passage of this bill. As Ms. Senator Good noted, it passed 49 to zero, and its enactment provides our community with the opportunity to not only do something for us, but to be a leader and provide a blueprint for other such partnerships throughout our great state. Think about it, of all of Indiana's 92 counties, many with challenges similar to those that we face here in Vigo County, the state entrusted us to create a model that could be replicated in other parts of the state to create and implement a substantial partnership between local government and school districts. As I presented to the council, county council on September 2nd, we are simply asking to utilize this new legislation to create a, an oversight board so that we can have a community conversation. Another key component that's been pointed out in the new statute is the ability to use non-property tax revenue generated by the county to help modernize our schools. Schools can only use property taxes. In order for us to use non-property tax funds, we need help and a partnership to be able to do so. Soon after I began serving the Vigo County community, I participated in a meeting that involved many of our local Vigo County farmers. At this meeting, it was very clear that our farmers understood and supported the fact that we needed to modernize our schools. They were also very, very clear in that they wanted us as a school corporation to help advocate for other solutions that would use non-property tax revenues, to find a solution so it wasn't 100% solely on property taxes. We are grateful that such a bill passed, and we are grateful that the state legislature gave us, Vigo County, the opportunity to form the model for the entire state. As previously mentioned, in addition to creating an option for using the non-property tax-generated funds, the new statute adds levels of transparency by requiring the formation of an oversight board that will learn about and weigh the risks and the benefits of such a partnership. To the point of partnerships, we are proud of the partnerships that we already have with Vigo County. For example, the Vigo, Vigo County Sheriff's Department supports and serves as school protection officers. They assist in providing safety and security at various events, and they provide gun safety training for our youngsters each summer. Other examples of our partnership include the allocation of county funds to support mental health services for our VCSC students. I think that was done my very first year as superintendent. I think that was the first time I ever came to a county council meeting. And the processes that allow, we also have a process where the county supports and pays for processes that allow the courts, law enforcement, the Department of Child Services, our schools, the probation department, and the prosecutor's office to work together to provide support to children who are the victims of abuse, neglect, or other traumatizing events. We have been working with county, city, and community representatives to develop partnerships to reduce chronic absenteeism. These partnerships directly benefit children. We are appreciative of these, of these partnerships, and we hope the county avoids taking actions that prevent them from continuing or to stop others from being discussed or implemented in the in the future. Additionally, with the library, along with all the other entities, libraries, townships, fire territories, the City of Terre Haute, and others, we are grateful for the work of the Vigo County officials who help collect property taxes and distribute it to us so that we can use that money to transport students, provide equipment, and technology to support student learning, and to maintain our schools. Unfortunately, after accounting for circuit breaker losses in credits, property tax cap losses, the amount of monies that we receive as a school corporation is not enough to preventively maintain our 23 schools. Our Board of School Trustees, who are all here, they would recognize themselves, we thank them for their support and for their leadership as well. They recognize that we can't continue to support 23 schools, the math simply doesn't add up, and that we have to make some difficult decisions and reduce the number of schools that we need to take care of, and more efficiently provide educational opportunities for our students so that we can continue living within our means. We also recognize that we must address the realities of our current and our forecasted enrollment, the realities of the school funding changes that began in 2008 and have had multiple iterations since then, and the realities of the shortages in the number of available teachers and other employee groups who serve our students. We believe that our reorganization and modernization plan address these realities in a responsible manner that can result in increased opportunities for our students, opportunities that other communities simply take for granted. Although our current school board members were not part of the frequently mentioned past history, we recognize and understand that our past history necessitates us to be open-minded about the additional transparency required by the statute that guide this partnership between Vigo County and Vigo County School Corporation, and we welcome that scrutiny. That is why we have presented information about the condition of our schools, our finances, and our enrollment at school board meetings and multiple facility forums. The facility forums were offered at various times and various locations, and recordings of our school board meetings are available for those who are unable to attend school board meetings in person. Additionally, the information presented during our school board meetings and facility forums are available on our website so community members can peruse them at their own convenience. What's this really all about? At the turn of the century in the year 2000, the class of 2013 began kindergarten. Based on the information shared by many throughout our community, it was known at that time that we had several schools that needed some repairs and some modernization. If we had acted at that time, the cost of modernizing our schools would have cost 46% less than it would cost to modernize them today because of the rates of inflation that have occurred over the past 25 years. In 2013, when that class of 2013 was graduating, we brought in another class of students to be kindergarten. Those students are today's senior class, the class of 2026. The need for repairing and modernizing our schools were even greater in 2013 than they were when that senior class started back in 2000. Again, many throughout our community knew that the modernization of our schools was a necessity. If we had acted comprehensively at that time, the cost of modernizing our schools would have been about 33% less than it would cost today because of the rates of inflation over the past 12 years. Today's kindergarten students will be on target to graduate from our schools in 2038. That is a really hard thing to get my head wrapped around, 2038. Our community has yet to act comprehensively to repair and modernize our schools, and if we fail to do so again, it is possible that at least three generations of children would have been denied the opportunities that many other communities in our state take for granted. The time to act is past due. We had a chance to address these issues when the number of issues were fewer and the cost to address them was much less. In other words, the longer we fail to act, the more expensive it gets to do what we need to do. Today, all of our schools are in need of repair and modernization. Despite the funding obstacles placed before us since I began serving the school district, we have replaced 14 chillers, seven boilers, five air handling units, replaced all or parts of two roofs, and are in the process of replacing a third, repaid several parking lots and drives, and addressed years-long traffic flow issues at Lost Creek, Dixie Bee, and Rio Grande, partially updated lighting at each of our three high schools, updated the cafeterias of each of our three high schools, and continued painting and removing antiquated wall coverings at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. We continue to work on improving our heating, cooling, and ventilation systems, replacing failing roofs, refreshing our learning spaces, and addressing many other repair and modernization projects. Unfortunately, the domestic plumbing and sewer and the electrical projects are going to require very substantial investments and work. However, our efforts that we are making are barely making a dent because of how many needs there are that have accumulated over the last 30 to 40 years. Despite our focus on modernizing our schools, we have also stayed true to our mission. We continue to develop the talent and nurture the creativity of each learner. We have done so by increasing expertise among our employees through professional learning opportunities and implementing the high reliability schools framework for continuous school improvement. We are making progress. As noted recently, our passing rates for the state-mandated I-READ assessments for third graders increased by more than 4%. We fully anticipate an increase in our graduation rates when information for the class of 2025 is released by the state of Indiana in the next few months. We also continue working to reduce operating expenses so we can continue to live within the means that we are provided and be fiscally responsible to our local taxpayers. These actions recently noted when the School Board of Trustees adopted our budget last week. After certification by the DLGF, we expect the school portion of our community's property tax rates to decrease by about six or seven cents. The property tax rate for Vigo County School Corporation was already below the state median, which means that our school property tax rate is in the bottom half of schools throughout the state, and we anticipate that it will fall further behind the state median because of actions taken by our school board on October 20th. Tonight, we are simply reiterating our previous ask of the county council. Specifically, we are asking the council to utilize the provision in the recently enacted state statute to create an Oversight Board. We thank the commissioners for their willingness to do that and the leadership to offer that. By doing so, we can provide additional transparency that we recognize from our past history is needed in this community. It's not comfortable to be able to sit here and say that, but we recognize it, and we're willing to do so and have been taking steps to do so. We understand that we're going to not only have this Oversight Board check the commissioners' work that they've been championing about the monies that are available, they're going to check our work as well, and we welcome it. The Vigo County School Corporation also understands that a partnership means that we commit resources to this also, to modernize our schools. In addition to what we have done thus far, we have maximized our current bonding capacity, and we will use it to engage in significant school modernization projects. We're not sitting back asking the county to do this alone, we're just asking for assistance. The available bonding capacity that we can utilize without raising anybody's property tax will provide us with enough funds to modernize West Vigo High School and two, possibly three, elementary schools. It is a significant project that will benefit many students. Regardless of whether the county chooses to invest in Vigo County children through a partnership with the Vigo County School Corporation, VCSC remains committed to modernizing our schools. We are hopeful that the county chooses to partner with us in investing in our community's children so we can accelerate the process of modernizing our schools so fewer children miss out on the opportunities that are taken for granted elsewhere. Our children did not cause the mistakes of our past. Our current school board was not a part of ignoring the facility needs that have accumulated over the last 30 to 40 years. In fact, no one person or board is responsible for all of this accumulated, all these accumulated needs. However, those of us in the community today are responsible to finding a path forward. We invite the county to join us in investing in our community's children and being a part of the solution moving forward together. More than two generations of our students have missed out on learning opportunities because of a lack of action to modernize our schools. Please consider our requests so we can take steps to make sure that more students do not miss out. If our current kindergarten students do not receive the opportunity to learn in modernized learning spaces, then that means at least three generations of students would have missed out on the opportunities that other communities simply take for granted. Thank you for your time, the partnerships we already are engaged in, and consideration for utilizing this opportunity to create an Oversight Board and discuss the possibility of an even more robust and significant partnership, a partnership that could accelerate the process of modernizing our community's learning spaces. Our kids need us to act, our kids are worthy of this investment. Thank you.
Well, President Thompson, this concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to take any questions as commissioners, if there's questions for Kristin and her team, or maybe even Dr. Hemzil will be happy to answer those questions. I just want to say thank you to you guys for showing up, even if you're opposed to something, adamantly opposed. Mark, Mike, and I, Brainan, have been a part of some very uncomfortable conversations, but we still show up to represent all of our community, and we're extremely proud for you being here.
I appreciate it, Chris. Questions from council? I have a couple, maybe best suited for Senator Good. Thank you. I think if anyone in this room knows the bill, it is probably you. Is that fair to say?
I certainly hope so.
A couple of things that you mentioned while you were talking, you said this committee can make recommendations for a plan, and the current plan that has been mentioned is just a current plan, correct?
That is, yes, that's how I see it. I think in the effort of, I don't want to speak for the school corporation, but I took it as in the spirit of their transparency, they wanted to show that there's been some thought put into this. But the idea being that a board would actually start doing drilling down and actually doing far more vetting than what you all in a limited time that you have to be able to ask those tough questions. So I saw it as the school corporation was presenting a plan, and there could, it could be that plan that this board could recommend to you all, but there could be some other ways to address the school facility issue.
Okay. What are the specific duties of the board? What will they be doing?
Sure. I mean, in part, it will be to communicate to you all and to the people a timeline to organize, get the right representatives appointed to the board, begin the communication with the school corporation on different ideas, including different price points, you know, what are some different options that we could potentially vet, and begin to drill down and ultimately make some recommendations to you all of some different paths to help resolve the school facility issue.
It was mentioned, but is, will the board be paid? Does this committee in any way circumvent the council? Will they be able to enter into specific agreements without the council's knowledge? And this committee, from my understanding, they will come up with a estimated cost of a new school build, and they can make recommendations to the council for any specific dollar amount or any specific funding, correct? It's not either all or nothing?
Correct. And I want to really drill down here, forgive me, Mr. President, you said a new school build. The plan that could ultimately be vetted and agreed upon might not be a new school build. I really want to emphasize that. It might be, but the beauty of having a vetting board like this is to go through all of these options and ask these tough questions, and ultimately, though, present to the county council members, the elected officials who hold the purse strings of our tax dollars to ultimately decide which option you all would feel comfortable to invest in.
And again, this was touched on a little bit earlier, but it's one of the things that I've heard several times over and over. Is it a open checkbook?
Absolutely not. Just like, and I mentioned my friend, Mr. Loudermilk, and his great work in oversight of our group homes, he doesn't have an open checkbook. He has to come before you every single time an improvement has to be made on those important group homes, right? And that means he's got to go to that sunshine meeting, he's got to make the case, he's got to answer the tough questions, the questions that he might not be in a position to. He usually is totally prepared to answer all those questions, but there may be something, hey, I've got to get back to you next week. It would be the very same thing. The chair of that board or a representative of that board, an actual person, would have to come before all of you, asking every single time before one penny of our tax dollars would be invested in anything, including whatever were the operational needs of that board.
Thank you. Might be my last question, I don't know. When this bill was created, how many counties does it affect in the state?
Well, there was a lot of back and forth because I think there were a number of counties that wanted to be a part of it, but the counties, there are many counties that have more than one school corporation located in the county. I'm so grateful that we have one school corporation in Vigo County, and ultimately, it was determined, hey, this might be something that we want to do, so let's look at Vigo County and let's give them the shot to see if this might work, so it applies to us. And I just, if I may, just one more thing, I don't know about all of you, but I'm proud of that. I'm proud that we're the trailblazers, we're the ones that the rest of the state is looking at. We're not following anybody, we're leading something here in a bipartisan way and taking part of education.
Thank you. Any questions for Senator Good?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mark, can I ask you a question? It's been mentioned several times where the $100,000 was coming from, I think, and we touched on it tonight, I just want to make sure everybody in the room understands. It initially, I believe, started with maybe edit funds initially when it was first mentioned, and now it's gotten to casino funds, correct?
Yes. Our idea was-
Our idea was we would take this out of a fund that does not come from the direct taxpayers here in Vigo County. Right now, most of that money that's in that is the riverboat money that comes from all over the state. So that was why we went that route, so that even in this first step, there is no taxpayer money involved in this.
Do you, and this is, you probably, I don't know, but is there a, an estimate on how much this board will ultimately cost in their, in their procedures, what they're going to be doing?
No.
Is that a?
There's a lot of questions as county commissioners, as county council people, as a mayor regarding school finance that Dr. Hems will know a lot more about municipal finances, like we used Crowe for the jail back in 2018, we currently use Baker Tilly. There's going to be a lot of interlocal conversations that have to happen and a lot of legal perspective to determine the correct route forward if there's a recommendation made that the county gets involved. So we're asking for a hundred grand, and we're going to stick to that. If we need something more, I'm sure we can find members of the community who have overwhelmingly texted us and said they'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Any questions from?
No, I, I just think we're here tonight to learn, and we've got, got some good, good information that we didn't have before. But we're here to learn, and we've got people we can go and talk to and, and get some more. But we appreciate what you guys have done tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Hey, President Thompson?
Yes.
Could we allow Tanya Pfaff to speak real quick?
Yes.
She's here, she was a part of this project. If she'd like to come forward, we would love to be able to have her speak.
Thank you for the nice applause. First of all, I'd like to see who's in the audience, if you don't mind. Students, raise your hands. Everybody look around. Thank you for showing up. Parents of any kids in Vigo County School Corporation, ever. Look at that. Okay? Most important, teachers. So I have the unique perspective to talk to you on three different levels. State representative, teacher, former, I just retired, and parent. So the first one is state representative. Greg, he's around here. Greg and I have been working on this for over a year. I was very excited to support this legislation. It gives Vigo County the opportunity to do something no one else can do, which is involve our businesses, our corporations, private donations to help make these schools better. That's the intent of the bill, period, to create a new system to move forward in this county instead of backward. As a parent of four very busy kids, I traveled all over the state to different schools. We are so behind. I picked up chalk for thirty-two years. Chalk, not a smartboard, chalk. Think about that. You go to other schools, the athletic facilities are amazing, the classrooms are amazing, the connectivity, the student, the, the whole experience. We're sitting in this auditorium here, which I've been to many times because North looks exactly like this, and the chairs are old, the system's old, we have to update. And especially as a teacher, do you know how difficult it is to teach in gloves? To teach in a room inside that's so hot that your students pick up a piece of paper and it sticks to their arms, and you don't know one day from the next. You walk in, well, I never dressed like this when I was a teacher, but I just came from Indy. You walk in and you don't know if it's going to be ninety degrees in your classroom or sixty. That is very difficult to concentrate as a student in an environment like that. I'm not here to blame anyone, I'm here to move forward. Council members, thank you for showing up, we really appreciate it, big part of the job. And I hope that you listen for the next, what, five, six hours? Of all the public has to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah.
Are you done?
Yes.
Or did you have something else?
Go ahead. I was going back to my seat.
Okay, so you are done with your presentation?
Yeah.
Everybody's, okay. We will move into the public comment portion of the evening. We did have a sign up sheet. I will call people up, you will come up to the podium. I'll call three or four at a time. I don't want to create a, a long line. When you get done, just quietly return to your seat, I'll call somebody else. You will be timed, there is a, we have a rule of a three-minute rule. The council will not be answering any questions or asking any questions of you, this is strictly information for us to, help us down the road, I guess. So as I, like I say, I'll call three or four people up, come up to the podium, state your name, and give your piece, you've got up to three minutes. It's everybody.
I don't want to presume, but I would like to ask that everybody remain respectful to the people that are, that are up and asking their questions or providing their point of view. Please just respect them, that's, that's all I'm asking. Thanks.
All right, the first couple speakers, speakers, Jewel Lee, Jennifer Templeton, and Katie Butwin.
Mr. President, members of the council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jewel Lee, my address is four-four-nine-nine Majestic Oak Court, Westfield, Indiana. But for the fifteen years previous to this, it was three-eight-three-six Ironwood Lane, Terre Haute, Indiana. Vigo County is my home, I graduated with Senator Good from this school back in nineteen ninety-one. I was asked last week to opine on the legislation that was passed and what it truly meant, whether it was an open checkbook, and many of the questions that you were just asking, Council President. And the fact of the matter is, when you look at this legislation, it is not an open checkbook. There's clearly defined obligations and powers that are granted to this commission. And this commission has a power of oversight and management, and that is it. But it is oversight and management of funds that this council, the county council, would appropriate. Heard earlier Commissioner Schweitzer talk about the appropriation process, and I'll go a step further. I will tell you that in the statutes of the state of Indiana, that if there's an expenditure that exceeds an appropriation, meaning that this council has not appropriated the funds and somebody in the county spends that money, it could be a Class B misdemeanor, so it rises to the level of crime. Any taxpayer dollar that's going to be spent has to originate from the actions of this council. Now, after I opined on that and the interview was published, there were some questions from some friends of mine in the community, and I realized that I needed to spend a little bit more time on the transparency question that I raised. We've heard transparency spoken about quite a bit here, but just by saying transparency, it doesn't truly explain what and why this legislation makes this process so much more transparent. Across the state of Indiana, I work with communities that deal with different referendums, different projects that you go through. Usually when a school corporation has a project and it goes through a referendum, the people that are in charge of that project, who know what's going to happen, are the people in that school corporation. That's not what happens with this legislation. This legislation requires that if the county council provides some funding, that the county council has an appointment, the county commissioners have an appointment, the city has an appointment, and the business has an appointment. You have four separate entities of the community that will never have a say in one of these processes in another community. And this is the part that makes it so transparent and so big. We are not talking about elected officials in those positions. We're not talking about a county commissioner to be appointed, an accounting councilman to be appointed, we are talking about a member of the public. Nowhere else in the state of Indiana have I ever worked with a project where you're talking about taxpayer dollars, where the people that are acting as the oversight and the management of those taxpayers' dollars are not elected officials, but rather the taxpayers who live in the community. I heard the statement by Commissioner Clinkenbeard earlier, that he wants this to look like this community made up of farmers and businessmen and things of that nature, and that is something that you don't see anywhere else in the state. So I just want that out there, I tried to get it in my three minutes, so thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Kylie Reed, if you would please come up. Kylie Reed.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Templeton, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak publicly to you all, thank you for being here. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the Wabash Valley Athletic Association, and I'm here tonight to represent that organization. The WVAA is a local nonprofit that works with our schools, youth programs, coaches, and families to support athletics and wellness across Vigo County. Additionally, I'm a parent to two kids who are both student athletes in Vigo County. I also own a small business that has a consulting practice, which ironically is focused on helping organizations achieve productivity. From the WVAA perspective, we see every day how athletics and strong school programs bring people together. Statistically, kids who participate in sports are more engaged, have higher grades and test scores, and learn important life lessons that help them succeed in society. If I had the time, I could go on about how these skills translate into the workplace. Unfortunately, we also see every day how our facilities are outdated and stretched thin. Having traveled to watch my kids compete through the years has been eye-opening when I see the facility advantages other communities provide their children. I'm not just referring to community, referring to communities like Carmel or Fisher's, I'm talking about Mooresville, Brownsburg, Crawfordsville. Frankly, by consolidating our facilities, we can provide more athletic opportunities to our students. While it does seem counterintuitive, it is important to note that currently in our three high schools, out of the seventy-five sports teams that are available, we are only able to have four teams that are able to field a freshman JV and varsity team. Four out of seventy-five, there's plenty of room to play. By pooling resources of two high schools, this would allow us to, for better athlete development and participation. Additionally, it would give us the option to expand the types of sports offered, perhaps lacrosse, field hockey, rugby, there are many possibilities. One thing I do know is that all of us can agree that our kids deserve better. The controversy seems to arise when discussing how that can happen. In this past legislative session, Senator Good did what elected officials should do, and advocated for another avenue to solve the facility's problem. The result is the option for cross-community stakeholders to work together to ensure the best outcome for Vigo County. I've seen social media comments that insinuate that this, since this legislation was created with Vigo County in mind, it is shady. Let us please have common sense and allow good intent to prevail. That, an elected official doing what they should do and advocating for a community is not shady. What is shady is to have someone elected, some elected officials working so intently to avoid any public comment before forcing a vote. Additionally, it's intentionally misleading for these people to perpetuate the falsehood that this is a money grab when county council would clearly retain all financial control.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Alex Allen Hodge.
Is that better? I'm Katie Butwin, I reside here in Vigo County, and I've worked as an attorney in this community in various positions for twenty years. I've experienced the difficulty of hiring and retaining talented attorneys and other professionals who want to live and work in Vigo County. Very often, those who have been interested in establishing a professional life in this community are the parents of young children. They are very rightly concerned about the educational opportunities that will be available to their children. It's been said over and over that the deplorable conditions of our schools is a detriment to attracting individuals to live and work here, and I'm here to say that is correct. You don't need to hear any more from me about that. I'm also the proud parent of a twenty-twenty-four graduate of Terre Haute North High School and a current sophomore at Purdue. My son Jack was blessed with the lifelong friendships and the support of teachers, administrators, and coaches at Terre Haute North through both the good and the bad. But he also routinely relayed stories of leaking ceilings, broken bathrooms, and freezing classrooms. As has also been said before, the children of this community overcome these hardships and go on to do great things, but the lack of adequate facilities is an unnecessary barrier to their success. My days of having a child in the schools are over, like many in this room. When it comes time for my son to choose where he will live when he starts a family, like many of you, I would like for this community to be an option for him. This is such a crucial moment for our community, and it transcends the normal political alliances. The Oversight Board will provide us with the opportunity to pragmatically and transparently evaluate all possible options to fund our schools, to investigate avenues to avoid the property tax increase that so many oppose. There will be difficult decisions along the way, but I ask this county council to be courageous and give our community the chance for our children and our children's children. Mother Teresa said, "I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the waters to create many ripples." I ask the county council to cast that stone, fund the Oversight Board, and see the ripples help generations of Vigo County children. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kylie Reed. The theme of the night is transparency, and so for those of you who don't know, I'm Commissioner Clinkenbeard's only daughter. And while that is a title I'm extremely proud of, that's not why I'm here tonight. Tonight I'm here as a taxpayer, a coach of fourteen years, and most importantly, a mom of one of those kindergartners that Dr. Hemsel just mentioned. I believe at this point we are past arguing over whether or not we need updated high schools. As we sit here in a room that can't regulate its temperature with broken seats that are older than me, it would be hard for anyone to argue that fact. Not only have I coached in Vigo County for fourteen years, but I also worked for the school corporation for eight. When I quit almost three years ago, I assure you, it was not on good terms. But here I am today, supporting this project, because I believe that the betterment of the community as a whole is more important than my own personal grudge. I want it to be abundantly clear that I do not believe we are in this position because of any one person or even a few people, and I do not believe it can be fixed by any one person either. I believe we need collaboration, we need trust, and we need to collectively agree to move on and move forward. We have an opportunity here to not only make real change in our community, but to show our kids they're worth fighting for, they're worth putting our differences aside for. And the best part is, I'm not asking you, the council, or the community to do it blindly. With the creation of an Oversight Board, it allows us to explore uncharted territory that could save us money, but more importantly, it allows for actual accountability and transparency. It offers a chance to rebuild the relationship between the community and the school corporation, as well as local government. If at some point you expect community members to take a leap of faith with their money, I believe it is up to you, the council, to take the first step and vote yes to creating this board. Say yes to the kids, say yes to working together, and say yes to the first step in earning back the trust of this community. There are many born and raised oceans like me, who just want what's best for their kids. We love this community, we want to see it thrive, and I urge you to not push us out. Be a part of the change and a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Campbell.
All right, good evening, everybody, and thanks for being present. My name is Alex Allen Hodge, and I'm here tonight as a parent of two Terre Haute North students, a co-owner of a wealth management practice, and someone deeply committed to our community's future through my work as the president of the Vigo County Education Foundation and the vice president of the Terre Haute Children's Museum. I'd like to share a brief story from Fortune I read recently. Around the end of two thousand and six, when Steve Jobs asked Corning to develop glass for the first iPhone, Corning CEO Wendell Weeks hesitated. He told Jobs he didn't want to risk the company's reputation if they failed. Jobs looked at him and said, "You're afraid. You're worried about looking bad, and in doing that, you're keeping your people from greatness." Jobs went on to say, "You're putting your reputation first, you're worried about you looking bad, and you're keeping your people, your team, your investors, your community from greatness." That challenge hit home. Weeks admitted he was afraid, but he went back to his team and said yes. In a matter of months, Corning's engineers created what became as known as Gorilla Glass, and today, Corning is the sole producer of glass for every iPhone in the world. One courageous decision- One courageous decision, made in the face of fear, transformed their company and set the course for decades to come. That story mirrors where we are as a community, and Vigo County is at its own turning point. Approving this oversight community isn't just a formality. It's a courageous decision to explore all options for building a better future for our students. It's about putting our community's potential ahead of personal politics and fear of failure. The Oversight Committee has the power to bring people together, to rebuild trust, combine expertise, and to turn creativity into action. It can align the passion we're already seeing from our community's business leaders, the Vigo County School Corporation, the Board of School Trustees, the Casino Foundation, and legislative partners, and channel all that into a shared vision for what's possible. The reality is, some people, you're never going to convince them that the sky's not purple, but most of our community is ready for this, and we're on board. People want progress, and they know our schools need attention. They want us to work together, to take smart risks, to be transparent, and to make something happen. It's worth noting that the experts have already presented their proposal for how we should proceed for the buildings, and so our focus should be entirely on finding and working together to find creative ways to fund these projects. The time is tacked now. Like Corning, and might I add, our current school board, county commissioners, and members of our county council, we can choose courage over fear and make a decision that has a great potential to positively impact our community, our economy, and most importantly, our children for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Sackman.
Hello. I'm Ellie Caldwell, and I am speaking tonight as both a working mother of children within the Vigo County School Corporation, a certified public accountant at Sack Rider &amp; Company, and a business owner who has spent my entire career focused on fiscal responsibility, accountability, and supporting the growth of our community. I care deeply about the success of our schools, not only because my children learn there, but because the quality of our schools directly impacts the vitality of our entire community. Like many parents, I want my children and potentially my grandchildren to learn in facilities that are safe, modern, and built for today's world, not yesterday. Our teachers and students deserve classrooms that inspire learning and reflect the same sense of pride and progress that we see in other areas of our community. They need to know that their learning and working environments are important to all of us. While wanting what is best for our kids, I also want to make sure that we move forward in a way that's responsible and sustainable for taxpayers. From my personal standpoint, the creation of an independent Oversight Committee is a smart, transparent approach. It ensures that decisions about our schools are based on facts, financial data, and long-term planning, not assumptions or politics. This committee can explore multiple funding options, including public-private partnerships, grants, and other collaborative opportunities that could help us build what's needed without raising taxes. As a CPA, I can tell you that the best financial outcomes result when oversight and accountability are built into the process from the very beginning, and that's exactly what this committee would do. I see firsthand how the state of our schools affects our ability to recruit and retain professionals in many fields, including accounting, finance, education, and medicine. When employers are trying to hire especially younger professionals or relocating, the first thing they're asking is about our school system. And for those more removed from the day-to-day of our schools, it may seem hard to connect the dots, but eventually, you'll be calling for a specialist or someone you need to talk to in a professional capacity, and they won't be here. You'll be driving to Indianapolis for those services. That's where this will come to affect every single person in this room for generations. This isn't about politics. It's about partnership and progress. It's about making sure that our community grows responsibly and that our children have the facilities they deserve. As a mother, a CPA, a business owner, I believe this Oversight Committee is the most responsible next step forward, and I urge the council to support this creation, because the decisions we make today will shape our schools, our workforce, and our community for decades to come. Thank you for listening.
Katie Goldner.
Is it picking up? Can you hear me? All right. I'm a soft talker. My name's Donna. I was born and raised in Terre Haute, graduated from this school, brings a lot of fond memories. So I'm glad for the effort to improve the schools. I'll just say that out front. I went to ISU. I've been in education for my entire career, and I moved away for a number of years. I moved back recently. I moved back! So it's not impossible to want to come back here. And I'm so glad to be back here and see all this activity. I don't have a planned speech. I've been jotting notes. I came here looking for both sides of the story. And so I'm just asking, I don't have a planned speech, I just have questions and some observation, and I hope you'll bear with me if it doesn't sound cohesive. I understand there was a vote, and that it was voted against by a majority to have the oversight. So my question is, and I understand you don't have to answer, my question is, by what authority is this still being considered since it was voted down? That's my first question. And then, who voted for and against? And can you put this in the minutes? I have looked in the minutes online, and I can't find a vote. The wonderful CPA did a presentation on our status of our funding taxes. There seemed to be plenty of money that's unspoken for, so I'm wondering, are our taxes too high? But why is there so much money floating around for us to use $100,000? And if this was, returning to the vote, if this was voted against the Oversight Board, and that had been ignored, how are we to trust in the council to honor votes on the spending? There was reiterations of, there's no power of the purse for the oversight? They have to... What I heard was, you won't be without your knowledge, but I want to know is without your approval? And how can we trust it if you're just dicepving procedures and governing docs to ignore the vote that had happened? So in all of this, I've come to say I'm supporting taking care of the schools. I'm all for that, but I'm vehemently opposed because of these actions to this Oversight Board proposal. But I am support for taking care of the schools. It's just not this mean because of the means of...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for this mean.
Josh Golder, Mayor.
Good evening, Council President Thompson, and members of the county council, and members of the community, and all who are viewing this online because they weren't able to attend for a number of reasons. I'm going to speak tonight on two perspectives. The first is a professional perspective as mayor of the city of Terre Haute, and the second is a personal perspective. On the first note, a number of companies meet with the mayor to either expand or to relocate. A large part of the conversation of recruiting a company, a large company to town, is driven by the state level. When it comes from the state, it then transfers to a county group, the Terre Haute EDC, to really get it over the finish line, to work with the county council, a city council, a commissioner, a school corporation, and they ask for three things. They ask to see the schools, they ask our housing stock, and they ask what workforce development opportunities are there? Can they train someone in Terre Haute or West Central Indiana to work at said new job that we are trying to recruit? We have had employers come to my office, we've driven them around, and they've said, "Mayor, we love what this city is doing, tackling blight, building new homes, focusing on infrastructure. You're doing many things that we want to see as we look to move to a community, but we cannot move here because of the state of the schools." Now, some employers are saying, "Young man," and when they start with "young man," it's going to be bad news. I've noticed that. And when they go, "Young man," I'm like, "Oh, boy, here we go, folks." The schools are holding us back. So as mayor, I could sit back and say, "Well, here's what I'm supposed to be doing, based off the city code. Here are the rules of being mayor." Or, as a leader, I could say, "What can we do to tackle a large-scale problem in our community?" And I know a lot of people will say tonight, "Hey, this is not about politics." To me, it is about the public service component of politics. You can read the rules and say, "I can stay in my lane," or you can read the rules and say, "I want to be a transformational leader to tackle a problem that every resident asks me about over and over and over again." And, boy, that timer goes down quick, so I'm going to move to the second perspective. From a personal standpoint, I'm a proud Terre Haute South alum. I love this school. I love this corporation. My homeroom teacher is right here, Ms. Sternfeldt. She did take my cellphone twice freshman year. My family loves this school and this corporation. It led to my brother serving as a Marine. He went to the Naval Academy, was a national champion boxer. It led to my sisters, who are championship-level swimmers and Olympic athletes. That is all because of the teachers that we have. And when I hear from the teachers over and over and over again, the difficulties, the challenges, the harsh realities of these buildings, I would ask our parents to listen and to hear the feedback from the people who are in these rooms every single day. Thank you, guys, so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Jane Nichols.
Good evening. My name is Katie Goldner. I was born and raised in Terre Haute. I teach within Vigo County schools, and my son just entered kindergarten within the corporation. Members of county council, I thank you, guys, for being here tonight and proving your dedication to your community. I know this is a complex decision. I ask that tonight and next week, when this is revisited, that you are able to set aside any skepticism that you may have had remaining after previous administrations, and consider the long-term impact that a failure to act on building new schools would have on our children, our teachers, and the future of this community. As a teacher, I see daily the realities of our schools and classrooms, but everyone in this room is aware about the building temperatures and the lack of functioning toilets and the doorknobs that fall off regularly. You know those complaints, and you know the strain that that puts on both teachers and students. Today, what I want to reiterate is that this is not just about facilities. This is about opportunities. Every child deserves to walk into a classroom environment where they can reach their full potential, not one where the basic needs are stretched beyond their limit. As a young mom, I look to the future. Unfortunately, my son will be entering high school before I know it. He deserves the best possible education. Right now, my kindergartner is excited about the learning process. His teacher is phenomenal, just as I trust most of his future teachers will be, and I want him to remain excited about his learning opportunities and not frustrated about the lack of resources that are available to him. He deserves to walk into a classroom that is welcoming, safe, and designed for students of today. The very teachers who are holding this community together, many of whom are parents themselves, are considering whether or not they can continue to teach in a system that is struggling to provide the very basics. And many families, especially those with young children, like my own, will have to make the difficult decision to relocate and offer their children a better future. Funding is an issue, and I understand that, but not moving forward on building these new schools is going to cost our community much, much more. Right now, we are at a tipping point, and you have an opportunity to be a leader in the growth and well-being of this community. Your willingness to support this corporation through the funding of this committee is an indication of your commitment to the community and our future, and I ask that you please do the right thing for our students.
Rachel Miller.
All right. I'm Josh Goldner. I'm a lifelong resident here in Vigo County, North alum, Indiana State University alum, and I'll be speaking on half of our police union here. I've been a police officer for 10 years, and this is from our union president, Lance Sanders, who could not be here today. He was taking care of his sick children at home. To the Vigo County Council, as president of the International Union of Police Associations Local Number 133, I want to express our strong support for the creation of an Oversight Board to review the proposed school facilities project and to explore collaborative funding options for building a new high school in Vigo County. Our officers serve this community every day, working with families, educators, and young people. We see firsthand how strong schools help build safe, thriving neighborhoods. When children learn in secure, modern, and well-equipped environments, they are more likely to succeed, and our community becomes stronger and safer as a result. Investing in school infrastructure is not only an educational issue, it's a public safety issue as well. New schools can be designed with modern safety features that better protect students and staff from acts of violence or emergencies. The Vigo County School Corporation has done its best with the resources and facilities available, but outdated buildings can only be improved so much. In today's world, it would be naive to believe that it can't happen here. Creating an Oversight Committee to find and monitor funding for new school construction is a responsible and proactive step. It allows our community to explore smart funding solutions and lessen the burden on taxpayers while ensuring our children have the safe, modern learning environments they deserve. On behalf of the members of the International Union of Police Associations Local 133, I want to thank the residents of Vigo County and their continued support and commitment to public safety and education. Together, we can build stronger, safer future for our children and our community. Respectfully, Lance Sanders, President, International Union of Police Associations Local 133.
Thank you. Erin Warner.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the Vigo County Council. I'm Jane Nichols, Executive Director of the Vigo County Education Foundation, and I'm speaking on behalf of its Board of Directors, who wish to express their strong support for the creation of an independent Oversight Committee to review a potential partnership between the Vigo County School Corporation and Vigo County, as it may apply to funding a new high school. The Vigo County Education Foundation was founded on the belief that public education is the cornerstone of a thriving community. Our mission is to fund programs and projects that enhance and enrich public education. Our goal is to connect private dollars with public schools to inspire, engage, and invest in educational excellence by supporting innovative programs, teachers, and students across Vigo County School Corporation. Our vision is a unified, forward-thinking school system that prepares every student to succeed in an ever-changing world. Creating an Oversight Committee represents a responsible and necessary step in this process. It ensures transparency, encourages collaboration between government and education leaders, and provides the community with confidence that decisions are being made with both fiscal accountability and long-term student success in mind. Modern, safe, and innovative learning environments are not simply a matter of bricks and mortar. They are an investment in the future of Vigo County. Strong schools attract families, strengthen neighborhoods, support teachers, and drive economic growth. We believe that careful review by a dedicated Oversight Committee will help move this essential project forward in a way that reflects our community's shared commitment to excellence and unity. We respectfully urge you to support the commissioner's request to establish and fund this independent Oversight Committee. The VCEF stands ready to collaborate and continue its role as a partner in building a stronger, more unified future for our schools and community. Thank you for your leadership, service, and consideration. The Board of Directors, Alex Allen Hodge, Jean McClary, Jerome Case, Tiffany Ewing, Arpita Bavishi, Kelsey Bogard, Malia Crosby, Lori Danielson, Dee Gosnell, Danielle Isabel, Kaitlin Lieberman, Jackie Lauer, Alpa Patel, David Piker, Emily Roberts, Julie Fosse, Rita Bernsensen, Susan Turner, Jennifer Kirchner, myself.
Thank you. Greg Hannam.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Miller, and I want to thank you all for allowing individuals to share their thoughts tonight. I am the mom of a junior here at South. I'm also the mom of a class of 2024 grad here at South. My family and I moved to Vigo County about 10 years ago for a job relocation, and when we came here, we were looking we came here, we were looking for what so many families look for, a strong sense of community, a place that values its people, and schools that would give our kids the best opportunities possible. At the time, we weren't offered a tour of Terre Haute South, understandably since our kids were still in elementary school, but looking back, it made me realize how much first impressions of our schools matter to families who have a choice about where to move. That's why I care so deeply about this consolidation plan and new facilities, as well as the creation of this oversight committee. Our school facilities matter, not just for the students and staff who use them every day, but for families like mine who are deciding where to put down roots. When people move into a new area, one of the first things they look at is the schools. Updated, safe, and well-equipped schools send a clear message: Vigo County believes in its future. We want to keep attracting families who will invest in this community, families who will stay here, work here, raise their children and grandchildren here, and to do that, we have to invest in the infrastructure that supports them, and that begins with our schools. I understand that change isn't easy. Many of us have strong emotional ties to certain buildings and traditions, but this plan represents more than facilities. It's an investment in our community's long-term success. The oversight committee will help ensure this process stays transparent, thoughtful, and focused on what's best for our students and their families. I'll close with this: Someone once told me, you become dangerous when you become comfortable, and when you're comfortable, you can miss opportunities. When you're uncomfortable, you grow. You think differently. You push forward. So I'll ask you tonight, are you comfortable, or are you ready to grow? Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for caring about the future of our students and this community that we all love.
Thank you.
Good evening, North Patriots. I'm sorry if you feel bad, being here at the opposition, but we welcome you here to Terre Haute South. There have been some really good speeches tonight. This won't be one of those. I'm going to take a different approach this evening. My focus will be on faith, faith in this community. I was born and raised here in Terre Haute. My future wife said no when I asked her to go to prom in front of the library two halls over. It was a very hurtful time in my life, but ultimately, we did get married and had a great life. My boys went here as well. In case you're wondering, she went with Fred Keenan. I have been fortunate to witness many acts of faith as a member of this community, inspiring acts of faith, so I'm going to give you a few examples this evening. A local family were true patrons of the arts. They listened to the Terre Haute Symphony, they attended community theater. They decided to sponsor a stainless steel sculpture in Deming Park. This was a visible sign of faith that will last for decades. They had faith in the future of this community. Another local family had a long tradition of education in Vigo County. They believed that young people, not just professors, should be doing collegiate-level research, so they set up a research institute at ISU. They had faith in the future. Students are the future of Vigo County. Another local family saw that so many of our young people were moving out of this community after high school. They also started seeing folks spend an awful lot of time looking at their phones indoors instead of being outdoors. They had an idea and began working with our county park superintendent, Adam Grossman. That dream just might become a reality, making Vigo County a Midwest or possibly a national disc golf destination. A year or so from now, we will have a top 25 disc course here in Vigo County, and it will be free, and it will host national disc golf tournaments that bring hundreds of thousands of dollars to our community. That family is showing our youth that they are appreciated. Those young people will be out in nature in one of our many county parks. That family is helping our young people have faith in their community. Another local family was observing the death of one of the oldest arts woodshop. They saw that so many older members of the community also would go elsewhere to retire. The adult education woodshop class had not been offered since COVID. Now, those folks don't necessarily have to move to Arizona or Florida retirement communities to get that. That family sponsored a revitalization of the woodshop in this very school called Project Sawdust. South now has arguably the nicest and best outfitted woodshop of any high school in the nation. The inaugural class is being taught this semester. The adult night class will be offered next semester. If average Jane and Joe Hoshen can have such faith in this community, I ask the County Council, present and absent, to show the same faith in this community by supporting this project. We need to ask ourselves, what will be the cost if we do not? Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Collet.
Mr. President, members of the council, Eddie Felling. I'm not here tonight on behalf of any board or commission, but I want to thank you for your time, those of you that spoke this evening. Just want to briefly remind everybody that this is beyond the discussion of a high school that we've all been talking about and focusing on. Project is much larger. I had the great privilege of my daughter starting first grade at Lost Creek this year, and we went in for orientation, and lo and behold, it was very cool that she was in the exact same first-grade classroom that I was in in Lost Creek 32 years ago. And while it was wonderfully nostalgic, when I walked in the classroom, guess what? It looked exactly the same as it did 32 years ago, and it needed replaced at that point. So I don't think there's any question that what we're facing, what this issue is, is the very first baby step of what is the largest crisis this county's dealt with in our generation. And I appreciate everyone that's spoken this evening, elected officials, other individuals that live in the community alike. I also find it extremely disappointing, and Sue, I'd ask you to sharpen your pencil for this one. I want to end with one question. Mr. President, where in the hell are the other county council members?
Don Scott.
Hello, everyone. My name is Greg Hannam, and I'm a Terre Haute kid through and through, and this community has helped me be who I am today. I went to Devaney Elementary School, and then Woodrow Wilson Middle School, then across town, Terre Haute North High School. I played a lot of baseball and took advantage of the opportunities that were available to me, like our early computer labs in middle school and elementary school, or Project Lead the Way, where I learned about AutoCAD and the basics of engineering in high school. And that prepared me not just for college, but for the rest of my life. And that foundation carried me to and through Purdue University, where I built on what Terre Haute gave me. I earned a great job in Chicago from there in software engineering and got far enough away from Terre Haute to realize what I was really chasing. I wasn't chasing money or the big city life. I was chasing opportunity, but not the kind of opportunity that requires families to pay tuition, go through interviews, or game district lines to be sure that they get the opportunities they want, but the kind of opportunities that let all families, including, God willing, my future family, grow and thrive. And it took five years of downtown Chicago to beat this lesson into my head, that the opportunity is not Chicago, it's not Indianapolis, it's here in Terre Haute. And that's why I support the plan to streamline modernization of our schools. It gives me hope that the future, my future family, will have access to all the same opportunities that I had growing up, because everybody knows with the pace of technology, computer labs from when I was in elementary school are drastically in need of update now. And thinking bigger, modern schools can make Terre Haute more attractive for more young professionals like myself. In the era of mobility, it's very easy to decide where your family will spend their time. And improving schools in Terre Haute not only makes young professionals on the loose wanting to find a better place, it can also help employers like Rose Holman, Indiana State, and Union Hospital find ways to bring better talent into the city to continue, as was previously mentioned, a potential specialist shortage that we might feel. Now, Terre Haute has a chance to give to the next generation a modern, high-quality education in a caring and supportive community, just like I had growing up. And that opportunity excites me, because it means I can raise my future family here, proud of where we're from and proud of where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Machino.
I'd like to start tonight by addressing the members of council that are not in attendance. I find it ironic that they want to bring power back to the people, but they're nowhere to be found when the people are here to speak. Members of the County Council, my name is Doug Collet. I'm a lifelong resident of Terre Haute in Vigo County, a graduate of Terre Haute North Vigo High School, Rose Holman Institute of Technology, and Indiana State University. I've spent my career in the asphalt paving industry right here in Vigo County. I've started, owned, and operated a local business, and today, I'm leading the expansion of a major Indiana construction company into this market, investing in our infrastructure, our workforce, and our community. I share that not to boast of my achievements, but because I believe in Vigo County. My wife and I are raising two young boys here, and unlike many families in my generation, we've made the choice to stay, to build our lives here, to believe in Vigo County's future. But belief alone is not enough. When this council made the decision to shut down potential funding for an independent oversight board, it sent a message. The collaboration, transparency, and shared responsibility weren't priorities right now. That decision didn't just affect the school corporation, and it affected the confidence of every parent, teacher, and young professional who wants to see Vigo County move forward. Let me be clear, this is not just a school issue, it's a community issue. When our schools are strong, families stay, businesses grow, and our neighborhoods thrive. When they're not, everything suffers. Over the last few decades, Vigo County has lost nearly 7,000 students. That's not just a statistic, it's our future workforce and our future leaders. Schools are the front porch of our community, they shape how families and businesses see us, and whether they choose to call this place home. This oversight board wasn't about adding bureaucracy, it was about building trust, ensuring that every dollar spent is accountable, transparent, and directly benefits our students and taxpayers. It was a way to bring together the school corporation, county council, and community leaders to find real, sustainable solutions. That's not government overreach, that's responsible leadership. I don't know about you, but I was raised that when people fall down, you pick them back up, and right now, our schools need a hand. I will leave you with this: This council has the opportunity to show leadership, to show that Vigo County can put aside politics and come together for something bigger than any one of us. I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't love this community. I want my children to grow up here. I want them to go to school here, and hopefully, one day, I want them to want to stay here. Supporting this board isn't about control, it's about commitment to progress. It's about believing that Vigo County can be a place where families stay, businesses invest, and children thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. T.J. Warren.
Hello. My name is Don Scott. I'm a lifelong resident of Terre Haute. My parents were lifelong residents of Terre Haute. My great-grandfather started a business here in Terre Haute that I currently continue on today. I was a graduate of North High School back in 1982, and I can vouch for the fact that these are the exact same chairs that I had back in 1982. I have six kids that have all gone through the Vigo County School Corporation. I have two currently that are here at South High School, a sophomore and a senior. A lot of information has already been shared, and I'm not going to rehash some of that, but there are just two points that I want to make up here. I'm also chair of the chamber board, and Kristin did an excellent job explaining the chamber's position on this issue, but I want to emphasize, I asked her last week, have we had any of our 600-plus members contact us to tell us they oppose this? And there has not been one, not one. They all understand how important this is to our community. The second thing I want to talk about, and to talk about to all of you, there was a lot of fear in that vote. When was it, 10 days or two weeks ago? Fear of the unknown, fear of what this committee might do. I challenge all of you, with what you've heard tonight, to spread the word in our community, to support. The council members up here are supporting this project. We have to get the message out for the sake of the future of our community. Tell your friends, tell your family members, we need to change what occurred two weeks ago and move our community forward. We can only do that with facts, not fear. So take the time to listen and spread the word about what this committee actually does, and do it with facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Murray.
Good evening, everybody. Craig Machino, Executive Director of Terre Haute Regional Airport. And Dr. Hensel, you read a list earlier, and I don't know if a heater for this auditorium is on it, but if you could write that down. I see people's breath in the audience. Before I was a director at the airport, I retired after 35 years in the military, and I, in that time, I spent some time in the Middle East, and we always started meetings with some contentious parties, right? Several people coming together, and we always smoked a hookah pipe and drank some very strong tea before those meetings. And why did we do that? You might have two or three of those meetings before you ever get together and talk about the business at hand, and the reason was, we had to build trust. And for me, the oversight committee is a way for the county, the city, everyone involved to build trust with one another. So I'm going to stick to my notes, because I say I've got a minute fifty left. I had the unique opportunity to attract military units and civilian companies to Vigo County, both in this uniform and my military uniform, and every time that I talked to one of those companies, education was the top of the conversation. So I'm here tonight because I believe the formation of oversight board is an important and necessary step for our community. Whether we work in education, business, government, industry, we all share a common goal: build a stronger future for Vigo County and the children who one day lead us. From my perspective at the airport, I see every day how our school system impacts our local economy. When companies consider locating here, they ask about our education, one of their first conversations they have, and a strong school system tells them we have a strong community, but a struggling one, no matter how much land, infrastructure incentive we offer, can make growth difficult. I understand some of our concerns about forming another board, but this isn't about adding bureaucracy, it's about creating trust. The oversight board ensures transparency, accountability, and community input on how funds are used. It gives the public confidence that every decision will be open, reviewed, and responsible. Right now, there are two construction plans and pass forwards being discussed for the new school. An oversight committee would have both the means and the capacity to evaluate each option carefully, make sure the facts are clear, and ensure taxpayers and the students get the best possible outcome. With this board, the county loses its ability, without this board, the county loses its ability to participate in school funding sources outside of raising taxes. None of us want that, and we lose one of the few tools available to help move our education system and community forward. This isn't about looking backward or assigning blame, it's about building a foundation for progress that we can all be proud of. Our kids deserve it, our businesses depend on it, and our community's future requires it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan McGuire.
Good evening, everybody. My name is T.J. Warren. I'm the CEO of Valley Professionals Community Health Center. I'm not going to spend a lot of time up here. I think what I want to say today has already been discussed. I really want to say what Ellie said earlier. I've had to lose several professionals to come to this community. Most recently, a dentist. She wanted to know what our schools look like. I drove her to our schools. I was embarrassed by our schools. Let me add, I'm also a graduate from this school. Dr. Hensel said earlier, I'm a graduate of year 2000. My granddaughter will be the class of 2038. So this means a lot to me, not just for my kids and for my future grandkids, but because I need to, I made a commitment to my board that I will grow and grow access in our community, but I cannot do it without a thriving school. In both cases where I've lost candidates, dentists and specialists, they chose to go to Crawfordsville because they thought the schools there were actually a better fit for them. Thankfully, I was able to keep them within my system, but I had to lose them from this community to Crawfordsville. So with that, I strongly urge the council to please put this oversight board in, not just for our future kids, but for our future businesses that we want to come to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Vocal.
Good evening, all. My name is Bob Murray, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Taxpayers Association of Vigo County. Our association's purpose is to provide fiscal responsibility, trans- (cough) excuse me. Our association's purpose is to provide fiscal responsibility, trans, excuse me, transparency and accountability in local government, while assuring that taxpayer dollars are spent wisely and efficiently. We're deeply invested in decisions that impact our community's financial health, including those related to the future of our schools. We're here tonight to express our support for the creation of an Independent Oversight Board, to review the proposed school facilities project, and to explore collaborative funding options for the building of a new high school. This board will allow for a careful, fact-based evaluation of the county's financial capacity, while identifying opportunities for partnership between the Vigo County School Corporation, county government, private investors, and other stakeholders. The Taxpayer Association strongly believes this process is not only prudent, but necessary. Vigo County residents deserve transparency, accountability, and a clear understanding of how such a large investment will be financed, without increasing the tax burden on families and local businesses. By evaluating multiple funding mechanisms, this board can help ensure that every possible option is considered before asking taxpayers to contribute more. We also recognize the state of our schools as long-term implications for our economy, property values, and quality of life. Well-planned investments in modern facilities benefit everyone, students, families, and taxpayers alike, when done with careful oversight and fiscal discipline. In closing, we urge the council to approve the establishment and funding of this Independent Oversight Board that represents a responsible path forward, one that, excuse me, protects taxpayers, promotes collaboration, and ensures that Vigo County makes informed, transparent decisions about one of the most significant investments in our community's future. As a side note, I'm also a CPA. Many, many years ago, I was part of a, a team of three corporations that wanted to come to here, and our schools-
Bob, I'm sorry.
Were a problem.
Jack Strain.
My name is Ryan McGuire, Vigo County taxpayer and follow, father to a Vigo County School Corporation student and lifelong resident. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, because I can't say it any better than what has already been said tonight. At the previous meeting, I heard a lot of things about following rules and being a steward of taxpayers' dollars. Most everyone in this room is more than likely a taxpayer, and the information given has been great for all. Those four empty seats up there could have learned a few things. I thank you all up there for doing your job as an elected official. It is a duty to all elected officials to serve not only taxpayers who support their stances, but ones who may be opposed to them, as well as self-appointed officials. What we are asking for is for this council to approve committee to look at the options that the county could have in helping to bring our high schools into the 21st century. It is my belief that the county will be one of the biggest benefactors to new schools as anyone in this. The effect it could have on the economic development of this county alone should be enough to say yes to this committee, let alone what it will do for the students and teachers. I would also like to remind you that the students currently at all Vigo County schools are also, hopefully, the next generation of taxpayers in this county. I say hopefully, because this county, as we all know, is in a population decline, and retaining the young generation is key. These schools are a big proponent to keeping them. I hope you all will look at this long and hard, and open the door for all lines of communication, transparency, and working together with all entities at this county to give the current and future taxpayers what this county needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Jarvis.
Good evening, County Council President, County Council Members, and everyone attending tonight. My name is Andy Vogel, and I've been a proud Vigo County resident for 22 years, and I'm a proud dad of two school-aged kids here in Vigo County. During my time here, I've had the privilege working with a couple businesses, successful businesses, and working with many people who care deeply about this community. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your support in approving this Oversight Board. But before we talk about structure and policy, I want us to pause and think about what's really at stake. It's the future of our children, and the growth of our local economy. Strong schools are the foundation of a strong community and a strong workforce. When education falters, every part of our county feels the impact, our businesses, our families, and our local government alike. These challenges don't belong to one group, they belong to all of us, and that means the solution must be shared as well. When we invest in education, we are not only helping students, we are strengthening our entire economy. Quality schools attract and retain families and skilled workers. They make Vigo County a place where people want to live, work, and build their futures. We need exactly that, in order to attract people from other communities to fill all of our open positions with our community. As someone who spends decades in business, I can tell you that companies don't just look at tax rates, they look at quality of life and the quality of education in a community. Strong schools build both. Investing in education isn't just the right thing to do, it's one of the smartest economy, economic development strategies we can pursue. Now, I know that some people are concerned that Oversight Board might have unlimited power to spend money however it wants, or that it's, they can take control away from others. Let me be clear, and as we have heard today, that is simply not true. Those are fear tactics from people not sitting up there. This board is about physical accountability and responsible stewardship, it's about transparency, making sure every taxpayer dollar is spent wisely, and results can be measured, no matter where the funding ultimately comes from. This isn't about creating more government, it's about creating better structure, better oversight, and ensuring that we manage our resources with integrity and purpose. At the heart of this proposal is collaboration. Vigo County's success has always depended on willingness of people from our schools, local government, and the private sector to work together. The Oversight Board is designated to align those efforts to encourage teamwork and promote accountability when we lead through cooperation, cooperation instead of confrontation, and we set the right example for our children. That brings me to something that has been on my mind since the last County Council. I say this as a proud Republican and ocean, but that night, I was an embarrassed one. Many of our children watched that meeting, and what they saw was the kind of example we should be setting for them.
Thank you. Jack, I believe.
My name is Jack Strain, I'm a farmer, Prairie Creek, Indiana, me and my son farm. I don't believe the farmer gets, on the paying of taxes, gets treated fairly. So, I think what we should do, and I'd be happy to pay then, I mean, I'm going to pay anyway, either way, but we should put, for a vote, you vote for the President, you vote for the Senators, you vote for the Congressmen, let's vote, and that's the big deal right there, that's reasonable for guys who are not up here tonight. That's the American way to vote, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. David Tippelton, I believe.
Hello, my name is Ed Jarvis, I am the Athletic Director here at Terre Haute South. I'd like to take a second to recognize some of the accomplishments we've had here at Terre Haute South this year. Last weekend, the Pride of South marching band finished fourth in the state NISM, that's the highest finish they've ever had in history. That was led by our band director, Tim Murphy. In our first year, our girls' flag football team qualified for the state finals. That was led by a couple of teachers, Colberry and Lucas Utterback. And then this weekend, we have two cross-country runners, Aiden Miller, Landon Crone, they will participate in the state finals at the greatest cross-country course on earth, Laverne Gibson. They are produced, or they are coached by John and Josh Lee. I bring up these accomplishments for two reasons, one, anytime we can celebrate our athletes and our kids, we need to celebrate our athletes and our kids, but also, they are led by talented, intelligent people that have chose to settle here in Terre Haute to live and work. As a school, we are only as good as the people that work in it. At South, we've been blessed to have amazing people, amazing educators who have produced amazing students and become productive citizens. Imagine what we could do with modern facilities. I firmly believe this community is at a crossroads, and as a community, we have to find common ground to produce these new schools. It's time to stop making excuses about the past, find solutions for the future. Part of my job, I get the pleasure, or the displeasure of seeing several schools with better facilities than what we have. It's not what you think, Plainfield, Avon, we're talking Shelbyville, we're talking Martinsville. We, as a community, have to be willing to do what's necessary to make our schools stronger. Step one is getting this board approved. I've said it several times, I'm a very proud member of the class of 1996 here at Terre Haute South. If this school would go away, I will be sad, but I will be very excited for what would happen in the future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Sears.
Good evening, James Twitchell, 79, 13 Marblehead Court, 39-year resident of Vigo County. Thank you to the ladies and gentlemen of the council that are here tonight, thank you to the ladies and gentlemen of the council that are watching us online right now, appreciate it. I'm here for two reasons, really, the two main reasons, and we've kind of really gotten a long way away from this throughout this process, but I'm here for the educators in this community, and I'm here for the students. I'm also here for my two young boys, one and three years old, who will eventually benefit from new and improved facilities. The other reason I'm here is obviously economic development, other than the need that everyone seems to acknowledge, we've gotten away from foundational reasons for moving this project because of a power struggle, self-interest, and future political gain, not county finances and tax implications, this has nothing to do with that. Let's talk a little bit about transparency, since it's been suggested that the Vigo County School Corporation is being less than transparent with this entire process. Back in June, they hosted listening sessions open to the public. At my own free will, I attended one of those sessions twice a month since then, the school board has meetings open for public comment for anyone wanting to express any discontent with the groundwork that was being laid out. At the end of the day, the entire Vigo County School Board, all three Vigo County Commissioners, three members of the County Council, and at least a couple members of the City Council, the mayor, all four university presidents, all support the formation of this committee and the proposed plan by the Vigo County School Corporation. This brings me to the suggestion that voters should decide via referendum. At least we not forget that voters did decide on a referendum back in 2022, when Vigo County joined Franklin Township as the only two of nine school referendums that failed to receive support across the state of Indiana. Our community has spoken on renovating North and South, 65% of voters said no thank you to renovating the schools and a tax increase to do so. If put back on the ballot in May, it will be four years later, it will likely fail again. We can either be opening doors to a new facility in 2029, or we can have this conversation again at that point, and with any luck, a new council, we can get something approved, and we'll have a new high school in 2033. Fortunately for the school corporation and our community, the County Council has set a precedent in the past of what level of financial support doesn't require a referendum. In 2018, without taxpayer input, the County Council approved an 0.75% income tax increase, which included an 0.25 special purpose tax for the jail. It would seem to me, as long as the committee comes back with a request for funding from the council between $1 million and roughly $53 million, we have no reason for a referendum based on past precedent. Simply put, if we can finance a jail, we can certainly find a way to partner with our school corporation.
Dan Melick.
Good evening, David Tippelton, here on behalf of the Terre Haute Economic Development Corp, and as a business owner and parent who believes deeply in this community's future. Our mission at the EDC is simple, to help Vigo County grow, attract investment, and strengthen quality of life. And when businesses and families are evaluating where to live, it usually starts with one thing, the schools. It did when my family and I moved to South Carolina over 20 years ago, with a one-year-old son, the first thing we did was look at the schools, that was the filter. And then we found, found the right school district, and then a house nearby. Then about 10 years ago, when we decided to move back to Indiana, it was the same thing. You know, we, one of the questions was, do we move to Indianapolis, and I commute, or say, everyone stay here to be together, it closes as a family. We chose a family, but it wasn't an easy answer, an easy answer, or easy choice. Even now, the same question hasn't changed, except the community continues to fall further behind. 50 years ago, when our schools were built, you know, our population is the same as it is now, while the rest of Indiana's grown by more than 30%, local incomes have continued to lag, our economic base hasn't diversified as it has elsewhere, manufacturing jobs have declined, we haven't attracted enough new industries to replace them, which has held back wages and growth. We all agree something needs to be done, but before we choose a path, we need to have a clear, shared understanding of the options, and how to achieve the greatest impact by leveraging every resource available to us. And that's why we're asking that you support the, establishing the Independent Oversight Committee, representing all of the groups of the City Council, County Commissioners, the mayor, school corporation, and business community. The committee's job will be to do the hard work, study all the options, compare costs and benefits, consider renovation and new construction, examine financing and phasing, report back with informed recommendations the public can trust. This isn't about deciding tonight which school goes where, I'm not the subject matter expert on that, and neither are any of the voices trading fear and misinformation on the internet. This is about a transparent, data-driven process that represents the whole community and earns public confidence. If we want to attract and retain families and employers, we must reinvest, and we must do it wisely. Modern, well-equipped schools are one of the clearest signs of community that believes in itself. Without them, we risk limiting our potential and falling behind communities that are moving forward. Because in this, in the end, this is more about, more than just about buildings, it's about restoring confidence in our future and showing that Vigo County is ready to move forward again. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Norman Lowery.
President Thompson, members of the council, thank you for your time, and especially for hearing public comments. It's amazing what can be learned when we're allowed to share information. My name is Justin Sears, I'm a lifelong resident of Terre Haute, I'm a proud graduate of Vigo County Schools. I was part of the first freshman class at Terre Haute North to attend all four years. That class alone started with more than 700 students. Until recently, I wasn't aware that I attended one of the two mega schools during the early Today, I have three children who have all attended Vigo County Schools, one has graduated, and one is on way to becoming a pilot, another is preparing to graduate and hopes to attend Indiana University, my youngest is a fifth grader, with still the dreams of playing in the major leagues. All three of my children have excelled in our schools, my wife and I are grateful for the administrators, the coaches, and especially the teachers, who have guided them and inspired them, and we're truly thankful for that, more than they will ever know. But I can't help but ask, if they achieved this much without, with outdated facilities and limited resources, what more could they and many others have accomplished with the right technology and modern learning environments? I've been fortunate to travel with my children across Indiana for academic events, club events, and athletic events as well. And nearly every time we visit another school corporation or different types of school campuses, my kids, their friends, and their teammates are awestruck by how much nicer the facilities are compared to ours. I've had the privilege to speak with Dr. Hemsel on multiple occasions, and I believe in his plan. His passion for our schools and community is genuine, and that is why it's so disheartening to see the majority of this council, who is not here, hesitant to be part of what could be one of the most important projects in Vigo County's history. Formation of this committee is not an ask to fund the schools, it's simply an invitation to be part of the process to better our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Case- Casey Schropel.
Good evening. My name is Dan Malek, and I'm a dad to nearly a five-year-old, and a part of the Taxpayer Association, a member of the Terre Haute Chamber. And I've walked into 701 Wabash Avenue for nearly 25 years, where I work at Old National. And over that time, I've seen the community transform the downtown landscape, as we all have. I've seen the community tackle quality of life with trails and our parks, and make them better. I've saw the community come together and address childcare, and create more childcare, which we need. I've seen the community tackle housing, which has been a challenge, and which has held the community back. And so I've seen us do hard. I've seen us get better at doing hard. And obviously, the challenge in front of us is, is going to be hard. A famous person who's widely followed, highly respected, said that if anyone who has material possessions walks along and he sees his brother or sister in need and has no pity on him, how can the love of God be in his heart? And it's a hard teaching, right? And he went on to say, he said, "Love not only in words and in deed, but love with your actions and with truth." And why do I bring that, why do I bring that saying up? What I saw the council present was, recently, was a unified, "We need to do something. We agree the schools have to be improved. We're in a, we're in a bad situation." Everybody, almost to a councilperson, agreed with that. But what followed was, the council created an ordinance to essentially shut it down while all the other stakeholders are at the table, the city, the county commissioners, everybody's at the table, and they turn their backs. And their backs are still turned, because obviously, they're not here tonight. And so my encouragement is, we've got to get back to the table and learn to do hard well again. It's going to take our, it's going to take our finest work, it's going to take our best effort, and I would like to see us come together to do that. Thank you.
Norm Lowery, president and CEO, First Financial Bank. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. In my role as a local business leader and community banker, I'm responsible for leading over 1,000 people. Our organization provides products and services to enhance people's lives. Achieving this objective requires us to attract and retain top talent. We are competing with communities from Indianapolis, Fort Wayne, to all states of the country. We recruit skilled professionals similar to the others by offering competitive salaries, benefits, as well as highlighting the strengths of our communities, including offerings of the arts, access to parks, public safety, and quality of our schools, to name a few. My position gives me a unique opportunity to witness every day the positive effects that strong public schools have on our communities and local businesses. I am dedicated to supporting and enhancing our school system, fully acknowledging its essential contribution to the welfare and economic development of our community. High-performing schools attract committed families who patronize local businesses and foster a stable workforce that supports sustained community growth. The relationship between education and economic vitality is fundamental. Allocating resources to our school system represents a strategic, long-term, future commitment to prosperity of our community. By investing in education, we lay the groundwork for a thriving community and a resilient local economy. Strong schools foster innovation, encourage civic engagement, and prepare the next generation of leaders to meet tomorrow's challenges. It is essential that we continue to prioritize our educational system to ensure lasting benefits for all. In banking, we understand the importance of stewardship, managing limited resources, maintaining transparency, and earning trust. That's exactly what this oversight board is designed to do for our schools. It's not about creating another layer of bureaucracy, it's about putting a sound financial structure in place, one that ensures accountability, sustainability, and confidence in how the public dollars will be spent. Our success depends on the cooperation among the school corporation, county council, county commissioners, and community partners.
Thank you, Norman.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Casey Schropel. I am a Vigo County resident. I work in Vigo County, and my child attends a Vigo County Public Elementary School. Thank you for the chance to share my personal opinion on this very important topic. Thank you to those council members who are here in attendance. It is very important that our residents are able to get true factual information about this topic versus getting information from Facebook. It is unfortunate and disappointing that the council member that represents my district is not present to hear my thoughts, even though their professional profile on our public website states that he vows to be accessible to all citizens to help navigate concerns or issues they may have. I want to ask everyone in the room, what do current and new residents look for in a community? Schooling, childcare, medical care come to top of my mind. We need to have a school system with an educational basis and a physical building that both our educators and our students are proud to come to every day, and that help facilitate learning and growth. I hope everyone has noted the state of the auditorium that we are sitting in. When Senator Good spoke about the chairs that we are sitting in, we all chuckled. But is this a facility that you can be proud of and excited to have your children or grandchildren attend functions in? Does the yellow caution tape help our students feel safe and excited to learn? Does the chill you feel, my nose has been cold for the last hour and a half, there's a lady in front of me wearing gloves and a jacket, does the chill you feel help you focus on the speakers? I don't want to be negative, but the state of our facilities needs to be noted. I fully agree that modern schools attract and retain employees and employers. If we are not able to attract and retain employees, our local businesses will need to turn to other counties to fill roles by commuting. We need our county to grow and flourish. During the past five years, our population has been flat to slightly declining. This is the first step in considering their much-needed investment in our schools, which is an investment in our future, our future firefighters, police officers, teachers, engineers, doctors, nurses, the list goes on. I am supportive of the oversight committee and the investment in our schools and our students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Got just a few more. I know there are some city council members here that may like to speak. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, yeah. Since there are three of us, can we have nine minutes, please? First of all, I'd like to apologize for my lack of formality. I came from work and running kids around. I don't have all the answers. But my years of involvement in local government have taught me that I need to withhold judgment, be present, ask questions, and listen to the answers. Those of you here understand that, and I respect your participation in this process. As we approach difficult community issues, I've learned that I need to try to keep an open mind. I was slow to understand this proposal. Information came to me in phases, and sometimes I don't get things the first time they're explained to me. And government finance is getting increasingly complicated, as my friend Earl Elliott and my friends currently serving with me on the city council can attest to. I have to gather information and process it to reach a level of comfort with what I can support. Speaking for myself, I have been able to reach that level of comfort with the proposal to form the committee contemplated in Senator Good and Representative Paff's bill. Let's see where this goes, and if we can improve our schools without raising property taxes. Thank you, everyone. Participating in a process like this is an important part of addressing difficult community issues. I'm proud of you all for working together to try to figure this out.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Bowlen, currently on the Terre Haute City Council. And I appreciate Senator Good, the commissioners, the council people are here tonight, the school board. After attending many, many opportunities to hear what the school corporation and Senator Good and Tanya Path had been working on, I brought a resolution, introduced a resolution to the city council. And I'm just going to touch you that resolution really quickly. The resolution says, "Whereas the Terre Haute City Council is committed to advancing opportunities for families, businesses, and students throughout the Terre Haute and Vigo County, whereas the city council recognizes the Vigo County School Corporation for its transparent, data-informed, and community-oriented approach to reorganizing school facilities with thoughtful input, clear analysis, and a vision centered on improving student success. And whereas, strong and modern schools are essential to attracting and retaining families, employers, and employees, ensuring that Terre Haute and Vigo County remain competitive and vibrant. Whereas, providing updated learning environments prepares students for future careers, helps to build a pipeline of talent that supports our local economy and workforce needs. And whereas, investment in school facilities helps protect and grow neighborhoods while strengthening the tax base that supports community services. And whereas, advancing the Vigo County School Corporation Facility Plan demonstrates forward-looking leadership and signals to prospective employers and investors that Vigo County is a community committed to stability and long-term growth. And whereas, unified support for the Facility Plan by city and county leaders sends a strong message of partnership and shared commitment to the success of the students and the vitality of our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Terre Haute City Council expresses its strong support for the Vigo County School Corporation Facility Plan. The council is encouraged by the Vigo County Council's commitment to open dialogue and careful review of opportunities to advance the schools for the benefit of students, families, and our broader community. The council affirms its willingness to work alongside Vigo County leadership and the Vigo County School Corporation and community partners to ensure the success of this important initiative. This resolution passed eight to zero, with one council person absent. So I just want to say, we presented this before all of the fear in the community occurred. And I did not know that I had an opportunity as an elected official of my constituents to not show up when the conversations got difficult. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Hello. I put this together very quickly. Sometimes I go off script, and sometimes that's not good. I get in trouble. So I do have something to read. I come before you as a realtor, shout out to my Century 21 colleagues who are still here. I see one of you. A teacher, shout out to my fellow teachers, and a city council person. As a realtor, I talk to people who are moving in and leaving our community often. And I can promise you, without question, our schools are a very important factor in the decisions of people leaving and the decisions of those who want to come and live in Terre Haute and Vigo County. As a teacher, I'm not sure I need to say anything that the squeaky chairs have said tonight already for us. You have heard about our school conditions. Every day I go to school in a short-sleeve shirt and a coat, because I know, well, I don't know what I'm getting into. It's either going to be too cold or too hot, depending on the part of the building I'm in every day, and it changes every day as well. So I need a coat or a short-sleeve shirt. My teacher colleagues, truly, I see, I work with the most amazing colleagues in education, inside and outside of Wabash Elementary School. And my colleagues deserve better, but more important than that, the kids that we serve deserve better. As a council person, I want to see Terre Haute continue to move in a positive direction, as we all do. I worry that momentum may slow and development may pause if we don't figure this out. The divisiveness has been very frustrating, because we all need to be working together. How much longer can we kick this down the road? And if not now, when? Tonight, I really do believe tonight, a strong case has been made. And for those who are watching and still have questions, we, there are answers. We've heard answers tonight to so many of the questions we've been reading on social media over the last few weeks. They have been answered tonight. I want to thank Senator Good for answering some of those questions, Representative Faff, Earl Elliott, my former colleague, who is without question the guy when it comes to numbers. And his role on the city council was invaluable. And I miss you on the council, Earl. You're a, you are a great council person. But it is so good to see so many of you in here tonight, not as many as there were. But, you know, Democrats, Republicans, it doesn't matter. We're all behind our community. And thank you all for being here. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And we will end the night on two, the last two, I believe they are students,
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Ava Stevens, and I'm a senior at Terre Haute North High School. I am here to talk to you guys, not only for myself, but for every single student that walks all these halls, and for the students that are going to come in the next couple of years. Every single day, I experience what it's like to learn in a building that wasn't built for today. I was spoiled, because I got to go to Autocreek in my adolescence education, and also Rio Grande, both of them having renovations a couple of years before I went. Entering North, I had held it to a hired standard that has yet to be met. The classrooms are dull and outdated, the technology is limited, and the heating and cooling systems barely keep up with Indiana weather. No matter how hard our teachers and custodians work, there's, there's only so much they can do with what they have and what they're given. Our schools are not modernized for the kind of education students need today. We are expected to prepare for the future built on innovation, collaboration, and technology. Yet, we're doing in a space that is designed for the past. It's not just about looks, it's about opportunity. It's hard to focus on learning new skills when the environment around you feels stuck in the past. Even though I'm graduating soon, I'm speaking up, because the issue is bigger than my class. Every year, the building ages more, the pairs get harder, and the learning environment declines. The students who come after me will be left with a school that's falling further behind in the education and quality. We have a chance to make that change right now, make an investment that will shape the future of our community. A new high school isn't just a building. It's a statement that we believe in our students, our teachers, and the value of education. It's about giving young people a space that inspires them to learn, to lead, and to take Because real leadership means thinking beyond today, it means leaving something better for the people who come next. Thank you for listening, and thank you for considering a voice of a student who lives in this environment every single day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zion Ogundari, and I'm a sophomore at Terre Haute North Vigo High School. And before I begin, I would first like to say thank you to the people here this evening speaking on the subject and those listening to us, especially all the board members that decided to come here tonight or are watching online, as I trust you are. I have attended VCSC schools my whole life, and I've seen firsthand the quality of our buildings. I understand the people on the board and the people of Terre Haute have grievances and are opposed to the idea of this plan. I understand that you have financial worries, but I need you to recognize the condition of the schools we are living in. You say you understand the issues, you say you acknowledge the negative impacts that these learning environments have on our future, but I'm afraid most of you don't. Just this year, I've seen pieces of the ceiling fall as I walk in the hallway, as well as had to walk in toilet water as I tried to use a dysfunctional toilet. My classes have even made me hot enough to the point where I feel sick, or cold enough that I have to wear coats in the summer months. These examples may seem like minute points that you've heard repeatedly, but this isn't a small matter. Trying to properly learn and grow in buildings as substandard as ours are impossible. I can't focus in class when I'm drenched in sweat or shivering uncontrollably. I can't properly prepare for a race or a game when the locker room reeks of sewage. This is more than buildings and construction, this is more than your pockets, this is the future of the next generation. You've heard it from the adults who don't have any connections to the school, you've heard it from teachers, now please hear it from me, a student. It's too late for my class and I to benefit from this plan, but it's not too late for the next grades. They deserve a change, they deserve to come to a school that they can be proud of, they deserve to be given the opportunity to succeed in their future. Please give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was no paper out there?
I apologize, I came in through the back door, I didn't see the sign-up. My name's Matt Larmour. My comments are for the councilmembers that are not here primarily, and I want to address the elephant that's in the room. I think it's very important that our students understand this. The reason that we're here is because we've put the interests of the business community above the interests of our kids. I think that's really important for us all to understand. I want our councilmembers that are not here to think about this. We are in a very difficult situation. I want to assume the best about their motives, right? And I want to ask one of the four of them to change their minds. We are here in this difficult situation, and I want them to choose our kids not for the interests of the business community, but because it's what they deserve. Our state and our community has put the interests of businesses above our kids for decades, and that is why we're here. Now, when we are in a terrible place, we're going to finally make a stand for fiscal responsibility that hurts our kids? We have made foolish, irresponsible, and risky decisions for decades that have benefited businesses, and now, what I'm asking, all we need is one of the four to change their mind. And all I'm asking is that this one time, maybe they think they're representing their constituents in the community who voted against the referendum, I understand that, but I'm asking you, make a risky political decision, make a risky financial decision, but this time, don't do it to attract businesses here. Do it because it's what our kids deserve. Please, thank you.
Thank you. I know the sign-up sheets may have been removed before, I did see some stragglers come in. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Hallie Pearson, and I'm a junior at Terre Haute North. As long as I can remember, I've been excited to be a patriot. My grandparents and my dad were both proud graduates of North. Unfortunately, the Terre Haute North I attended today is not in the same condition as the school my parents and my grandparents attended. In many ways, I'm immensely proud of my school. Every day I'm surrounded by teachers and peers who value learning and understand the importance of education. However, I cannot say that I take pride in the condition of our school. Our facilities simply do not reflect the standards of learning we believe in. I know it might seem unusual to see a high school student speak on this issue, as someone who will not be personally affected by the taxes needed to make this plan into a reality, but I urge you to take initiative and enact it. It is clear that our high schools will not last another 50 years without improvements, at the very least. We are asking for a perfect school, we are asking for advanced athletic facilities or state-of-the-art technology in our classrooms. We are asking for a place that is clean, safe, and something we can take pride in. This isn't about money, this isn't about politics, it's about the education of students like me and those who will come after me. I'm not speaking today because I will be directly impacted by this plan, I'm speaking because I want the future students to have the best chance of the best education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alyssa Sears, and I attend Terre Haute North. I'm here today because I care about my education, my peers' education, and the education of the students that come after me. I am also here to acknowledge that our schools do not reflect all that we have to offer. We come to school every day expecting to learn, work hard, and most importantly, prepare for our futures. We deserve safe, clean, and functioning spaces to do this in. In fact, earlier this month while taking my PSAT, we sat in a testing room for three hours where mine was freezing. My hands were stiff, my lips were purple, and my teeth were chattering. These aren't testing conditions for any student. When you walk in our halls, you'll come across trashcans catching leaks, putrid smells as you pass restrooms, collapsing ceiling tiles, and very inconsistent temperatures. These conditions directly affect our education that will be the basis for the careers we will spend pursuing the rest of our lives. As an athlete who runs cross-country and track, I've also experienced how these issues extend beyond the classroom. There have been times I've had to change in bathroom stalls because the locker room smelled strongly of sewage backup. At one point, the water coming from the sinks where we washed our hands was brown, and the area had to be blocked off with caution tape, leaving us with no sinks to wash our hands after using the restroom. When our friends and families come to support us at various events, whether it's academic banquets, concerts, or sports events, we should be excited to show off our schools. We have amazing teachers, dedicated students, and families who care about our success. But our faculties do not reflect that. Instead, they send the opposite message that we aren't worth investing in, and our learning environment doesn't matter. I want to emphasize that our faculty members go above and beyond for us every single day after working with limited resources and doing everything they can to make sure we still have meaningful learning experiences. But there's only so much they can do within buildings that are falling apart around them. They deserve better, and so do we. Whatever happens to our building may not affect me personally, as I will graduate before any changes are completed. However, this isn't just about the appearance and functionality of our buildings, it's about the messages our school sends regarding our community. When our schools look neglected, that reflects on all of us. When our schools thrive, our community can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clark Caddick, a junior at Terre Haute North. I'm not going to talk for a while, I'll just share a couple stories. The first one happened at the beginning of the school year. The music hallway flooded with sewage everywhere. It took many, many bottles of Febreeze to make that smell good again. The second one happened when I stepped out of first hour out of Ms. Goldner's room, stepped into a puddle, found out the ceiling was raining. That was crazy. Turns out, ceiling tiles were falling down all throughout the school building. The third one is of an old family friend who we had, who had to move out of the north, well, out of Vigo County School Corporation because he was too allergic to the mold that was in the vents. I believe in utilitarianism, which is the practice of making things as good as possible for the greatest amount of people. And the first step to that is approving a committee that will oversee a good future and a potential for greatness. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude our public comment section of the evening. Stand by. Yes.
Again, thank you all for being here. I just want to make people, there is someone having an medical emergency, and we have been asked to have people go out these doors over here when you conclude.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. I want to say thank you to the presentation, everybody that presented tonight. It was the first time, I think us as a council have actually heard anything other than what we've been seeing, so I greatly appreciate that. The speakers, everybody, I know it's hard to get up here and speak, for sure. I want to thank all of you, really appreciate it, and the turnout, thank you. Any other councilmen have anything to say?
No, just, I really appreciated all the input, it was refreshing to hear.
Thank you, have a good evening.